No.
Starts at six.
But you can go to the, you can go to the mayor's meeting. Get a feel for, and you're the vice mayor, so you should go.
I'll meet you there.
Facebook was through my hands.
Oh, on the next one. Oh, sure. I thought we did that. I thought we said, I thought we just said that if the vice, if the mayor can't make it to vice mayor, I thought we already did that, so we'd have to do a letter all the, every time. I thought we did. Maybe I'm not. Wouldn't be the first time. Yeah. Hey, if I get into those Skype calls, I'll text you.
Please do.
Yeah. Still is, we haven't turned it up yet.
Folks, we're gonna go ahead and get started, so I'd like to call the meeting to order. If everyone could join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Irene.
Councilmember Bagby.
Present.
Councilmember Brigham.
Here.
Councilmember Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Turner.
Here.
And Mayor Walter.
Here. Report out of closed session.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the council met in closed session to consider one item. There was no reportable action.
Thank you. Conflict of interest. If anybody, councilmember, has a conflict or staff of any items on the agenda today?
I do, I'll have to recuse myself from the public hearing, item number 11.
We're gonna open that and, okay, that'll be fine, but it's gonna be for about two minutes.
Yeah.
Okay. Agenda review, any changes to the agenda?
Mayor, members of council, staff's recommending that council consider moving item number 17 up front to hear input on the ballot measures.
That's fine. So, make a note, we'll move item 17 instead, ahead of number 11. Next item is public comment. Anyone wishing to address the city council on items that do not appear on tonight's agenda may do so. Please come up to the podium and state your name and please sign the log. Shirley, thank you. And share with us.
Shirley Davis.
Uh huh.
Good evening, councilmembers, mayor and staff. I just basically want to make an announcement. Yesterday morning, the Gospel, the Redwood Gospel Mission from Santa Rosa brought showers to Cloverdale, and they're parking them at the Living Waters Church parking lot. They're gonna be doing this every Tuesday morning, and this coincides with what happens at the Catholic Church when the homeless come in and they get breakfast and they get lunch bags and clothes and so forth, and that ends at 11:00, so they can just walk across the street and get a shower. They provide clean towels, clean underwear, clean socks. It's free to us, so it's not costing us anything, and I think it was just gracious of the church to, to offer this service to our community.
Thank, thank you, Shirley, and thank you to you and Councilmember Cruz for getting involved with that and bringing them up here. We appreciate it. Anyone else for public comment?
My name is Marilyn Mikalon. I've lived in Cloverdale for almost 60 years now, and my husband and I have been very involved in the community and in the school system. My husband passed away in May, and my concern is that people who've lived here many, many years have no place to be buried in or near Cloverdale. They have to go out of town or they have to go back to the town, the city where they used to live, and in our case, that's Cloverdale. So, I've had to make other arrangements for us in Point Arena, but I really think that that's something that our city needs to have, is a place for burial. The one cemetery we have now is full unless you have very old family members, a very old family, so, and there's room for the rest of those family members. So, that's my concern.
Thank you. Can I impose on you, just to share your husband's history with the school district? I know Mario passed a few months back, but...
He was the administrator of Jefferson School and also a few years at Washington School, mainly at Jefferson School. I was the teacher at Jefferson School also.
And there's a memorial bench, if you walk through Jefferson School, there's a memorial bench with his name.
The Lions Club did that in his honor. Mario was one of the original board members for the Senior Center. He was a member of the Citrus Fair Board, and he was very active in the Lions Club.
Thank you for coming and sharing with us. Anyone else wish to address the city council on items not on the agenda? Seeing no one, then we're gonna go ahead and close this public comment section, and can we have a student liaison report?
So, today marks the first ever Winter Formal, which we're all very excited about. It's basically a way for us to raise more money for our senior trip. Basically, that means we would all have to pay a lot less because obviously students don't have much money. And speaking of funding, Project Grad is trying to raise money for Project Grad. So, basically, at any business around town, you'll probably see these glass mason jars, and they'll just say donate to Project Grad, and that will help all the seniors graduating have a safe night with fun activities where no drinking or drugs or anything like that. They can just be safe and responsible and still have fun. And also, the Citrus Fair is coming up this weekend, and many, many, many students have participated in that this year and are volunteering, so we're very happy about that as well. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, yes.
What's the Winter Formal?
The Winter Formal is just another dance, really, but it's more formalized, it's like prom, so it's a bit higher end, basically all.
Better dresses.
Better dresses, that's about the only difference, but it's to kind of celebrate everything rolled into one senior trip coming up and Citrus Fair, all of that.
Cool.
Councilmember Cruz?
Two questions. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Where is the Winter Formal?
The Winter Formal, I believe, is at school, it's in the East Gym, I believe.
Oh, okay, so it's local.
It's, yeah.
And I would like to announce that Emma is one of the candidates for Citrus Fair Queen.
Yes, I am, that is why I was late, sorry.
And I haven't heard you request any of us to buy any tickets for you, from you.
We don't actually sell the tickets anymore, so if you wanna buy a ticket, it would be great to have the support, but...
That's what the paper said, the one that sells the most tickets.
That was in the past, I was doing some research on that, and the first Citrus Fair Queen was the one who sold the most tickets, there was no pageant, anything like that. But now it's just participate in the scholarship activities and do a talent, have a speech.
When do we know?
I'm doing a speech on the conservation of tropical rainforests. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Emma. Any other questions of student liaison? All right. Well, the next item is the consent calendar, and while we're doing that, staff, could lower the screen, because it takes quite a while for the presentation, thank you. Next is the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar will be approved with one motion unless a member of the public or councilmember wishes to have an item pulled. Councilmembers, anyone?
Mayor, council, if I can, I just want to mention that item nine on your consent agenda is the common interest agreement with the Mendocino County Inland Water and Power Commission. This, the item is, is on consent for your adoption tonight. I just wanted to mention that Janet Pauley is here tonight on behalf of the commission. Not requesting that you pull the item, but if you, if you wanted to just provide the opportunity for Janet to maybe just say a quick couple of words, I know she made the trip down from Potter Valley, that she is here, here this evening. So, that's up to you, mayor and council, if you just would, would wanna just have her make a few comments relative to that item.
Thank you. Any items to be pulled from the consent calendar by the public? Okay. Before we approve it, would you like to come up and say a few words?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council. Just very, very quickly, I think your staff report is extremely clear and very well-written. I know that you all understand the importance of the Potter Valley project, it is the water supply for Lake Mendocino, which you are obviously dependent upon, and we're all vulnerable with regards to what the final disposition of the project will be. Signing the common interest agreement is very good, because we will be able to have some conversations that we couldn't otherwise have due to confidentiality. So, I'm thankful that it's on the consent calendar, and thank you very much. I look forward to working with all of you as we go forward.
Thank you.
And if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would someone like to offer the consent calendar?
I'd like to offer the consent calendars.
Is it?
For approval. Sir, a second?
A second.
Okay. Can we have a roll call, please, Irene?
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Turner.
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham.
Aye.
And Mayor Walter.
Aye. Okay, the next item is gonna be item number 17, and it's a discussion that the council wanted to have on Measure G, Sonoma County Wildfire Prevention, and Measure I, Sonoma Marin Area Rail Transit. So, in no particular order, why don't we go ahead and start with SMART, seeing how they're here, and there is a slide presentation, and then we're gonna go ahead and open it up for public comment. So, would, would you like to come up? David, are you introducing this, or?
Sure, and then I'll turn it over to our clerk. So, the item tonight is a summary presentation on two ballot measures that are on the March 3rd ballot, which is the presidential primary election. What we're asking for tonight is for council to consider whether they'd like to direct staff to support, oppose, or take no formal action on the measures. So, really, it's just an opportunity for staff to provide an overview on both Measure G, which is the half-cent sales tax measure for funding countywide emergency services, particularly with respect to fire, and Measure I, which is asking voters to extend an existing quarter-cent sales tax for an additional period of 30 years. So, I'll, I'll turn it over to the city clerk to just give you a, a brief overview of both Measure G and Measure I.
Yes, so, good evening, mayor and councilmembers, Irene Komachewerby, city clerk. As Mr. Kelly had mentioned, this will just be a brief summary on the two ballot measures being proposed in Sonoma County that will be before the voters in Cloverdale. I also wanted to share that as of January of this year, the city has 4,696 registered voters. Throughout the entire county, we have 276,213. For those who are not currently a registered voter and wishes to make their March 3rd vote count, we are asking everyone to register in person by Tuesday, February 18th, at the county Register Voters Office in Santa Rosa or online at Register to Vote website. So, just going in alphabetical order, we have Measure G, which is the Sonoma County Wildfire Prevention Emergency Alert and Response Transactions and Use Tax. So, this measure was placed on the ballot by the County Board of Supervisors. It would impose a half-cent sales tax that is estimated to provide approximately $51 million annually, which would be distributed to all the fire districts in the county to go towards alert systems, improving vegetation management, recruiting and retaining local firefighter and emergency personnel, equipment, and facilities. In addition, a citizens oversight committee would be established to review the receipts and expenditures of the tax and provide annual reports. If passed, the Cloverdale Fire Protection District would obtain 1.37% annually towards the alert and warning systems, vegetation management, wildfire prevention, preparedness and response, as we see on our chart to the left, and then they would also receive 0.43% towards recruitment and retention per the expenditure plan. The expenditure plan in the tax does state that the fire agencies shall receive funds allocated in the plan if they work towards consolidation, but Cloverdale Fire Protection District was one of 36 districts that is exempt from mandatory consolidation. But any of the 36 districts listed may choose to participate at any time in either current or future consolidation. And of course, once consolidated, then the funding would be combined. If passed, the new sales tax rate would become effective on October 1st of this year and would remain in effect until voters choose to eliminate it. Okay, and then jumping to Measure I, the Sonoma Marin Area Rail Transit District Tax or SMART. So, this measure was placed on the ballot by the Board of Directors of SMART to extend the timeframe of the current quarter-cent sales tax, which currently remains effective through March 20th of '29. So, if approved, this would extend it another 30 years until March 31st, 2059. The tax approximately provides $40 million of annual revenue, and SMART is said to also have awarded or received grants. With this funding, SMART wishes to continue in their goals to relieve traffic congestion, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, safe rail systems, reduce project debt, and continue future operations such as at the Hildsburg and Cloverdale stations. Since originally approved, SMART has built and continues to operate the commuter rail system, extending from Airport Boulevard in Santa Rosa to Larkspur in Marin. Currently, SMART has stated that they are in the process of doing the Windsor Extension Project, which has been fully funded and is scheduled to open at the end of 2021. Future costs per their expenditure plan also states that to build the station from Hildsburg to Cloverdale is estimated at a cost of $170 million. Let's see. So, that's it for at least my presentation, and then if you wanted to open up to public comment, and of course, after that, if council chooses, you may direct staff to either return to your next meeting with a formal resolution to either oppose or support either measure or both, or simply take in the information and take no formal position. Thank you.
Thank you, Irene. Is there anyone from SMART that would like to say a few words?
She's down there.
I see.
It's hard to see you down there. Yes, thank you, Mayor Walter, members of the council. My name's Joanne Parker, and a lot of you know me from around town, but for those who don't know, I'm a resident here, and I'm proud to be raising the fifth generation of our family in this town. I also just wanted to share that I had been working for BART for about a decade and moved back to town here on the prospect of restoring train service to Sonoma County and Cloverdale. With that as background, I find myself the grants manager at SMART for the last 10 years, and I'm, I'm really pleased that we have this opportunity, that you've invited us to come and talk about some of our accomplishments and answer any questions you may have. Right now, as of yesterday, SMART's carried 1.78 million riders to date, 173,000 bicycles, and 6,700 wheelchairs. We just started service about two and a half years ago, and so far, our riders have emitted about a third less greenhouse gases than if they had driven alone. We, we brought, and there are out front, some, a green commute fact sheet for people who want to know a little bit more about the development of that assumption, but we are only gonna be having a more positive impact on the climate as we go forward, because the one-third less emissions is just to date, and our ridership has increased, which I'll get into in a minute. We have built 24 miles of pathway with our partners and, and through the leveraging of outside resources, and we have another almost 10 million, 10 miles worth that are going into construction between now and 2021. We've more than doubled the voter-approved sales tax by bringing in 323 million in grants from outside agencies for transit and rail and bike paths. These are all revenues that can't really be used for other things besides these transportation improvements. Our board has taken a, a number of actions, including, was it just last week, a low-income fare policy. We are Clipper-only, we participate in the regional fare collection system, so we've taken that policy and are actively pursuing being integrated into the regional low-income fare program. I, I would, I'd like to report, I brought, and the clerk has some here, highlighted slides from our most recent board discussion over our ridership. I don't know if they got handed out to the, to the council, okay, sorry. They're available for the public, too. There's, there's, there are several more in-depth ridership presentations on our website, which is on the second page of the handout. It's at sonomamarintrain.org backslash ridership reports. We have all our raw data up there, as well as some summary, summary ridership reports presentations. So, I wanted to let you know that in January of this year, we instituted seven changes to our system. The most notable and high-profile one is the 2.1-mile extension south from Santa Rosa to Larkspur, but we also constructed and opened an infill station at downtown Novato. We added four trips to our weekday service, so we're now at 38 weekday trips, which is quite a lot on, for a fairly new system and more than was originally envisioned for the corridor. We've closed the gaps now in our services, so that's 32 minutes between trains in either direction during both commutes, and we have earlier weekend service as requested by the public. We've got two new fare incentive programs that we launched in January, one's a Weekender Pass, which is available through February, so that you can ride your second part of your rail ferry connection for free. So, if you're taking the ferry first, you'd ride the train for free, and if you're taking the train first, you'd ride the ferry for free. And we also launched these Sale and Rail Pass, which is in place for the next six months, and it provides a $12 fare going for both the train and the ferry for off-peak and weekend services. And then, we've got a lot of bike lockers at every one of our stations, and you can now use your Clipper card to access those bike lockers. The next slide, we, we wanted to report to everybody, we're kind of excited, of, of these seven changes, it's resulted in a dramatic increase in ridership so far, and I, I can report also that it's growing even more in February. We've got, we had 70, nearly 72,000 riders in January, which was up 26% from the January prior, and we've got 2,800-plus average weekday riders. And right now, since we gave this report in the month of February, it looks like it's, it's climbing a little bit higher from that. There's some other things we learned in January, one of which is, we don't just have half of those riders, we don't just have, of the 2,800 riders, we don't have 1,400 people riding us. We did a little analysis of how many Clipper cards and mobile app tickets, unique cards and unique mobile app identifier numbers are, are riding our system, and we're finding it's upwards of 13,000 riders, unique people coming onto SMART or deciding to integrate SMART into their daily activities somehow. So, that was kind of a startling number to us, that's the size of Hildsburg, basically, deciding on any given day that they want to take a ride on SMART for work or leisure. And then, we learned a couple other things about what was happening in January that we shared with our board last week. It's not just free rides people are taking, we had four out of our five highest paid ride, paid fare days, and then we had the highest number of unique mobile app activations ever in the month of January. Again, a lot of people who are new to transit, new to the region, testing us out a little bit, not regular Clipper card regional transit riders. So, we encourage you to take a look at our website and check out the ridership information that's out there. We're continuing to update that site on a monthly basis with all the data as it rolls in. I want to also address a few questions out there about why we're going early. Everyone keeps saying, why are you going so early? Our, our current tax doesn't expire until 2029. There's three main reasons that we are, that our board unanimously decided to put this on the ballot for March. The first, and my, our chief operating officer, Chief Financial Officer, Erin McGrath, will speak to this in a moment, the first is to lower our debt payments by about $12.2 million a year, and Erin can address that. But I wanted to speak briefly about the other two reasons. One is to assure our current and future employees that they will receive a paycheck. You noted, I'm sure you are all experiencing this same thing, it's very difficult to attract employees into this region, housing costs being what they are and cost of living, and there's plenty of opportunity in the rail industry elsewhere. So, we've had a difficult time attracting qualified talent, giving, given those circumstances, and unlike transportation taxes, taxes where you are paying for road construction, we hire staff in-house, we're not hiring contractors for a limited-term position. So, we're looking to provide security and reliability for our services going forward. We, we currently have 144 employees that live in Sonoma County, five of them live here in Cloverdale, I didn't know that, so apparently I need to get out more. So, we're looking to provide some security for our ongoing operations. And then, third reason that we wanted to, that, the reason to go early and why our strategic and expenditure plan was, includes, recommended this, is because we wanted to include a, the, the plans include a commitment to operate the pathway and the rail extensions all the way from our current location through to Windsor, through to Hildsburg, through to Cloverdale. Having this commitment enables us to say that to funders, and believe me, since our board adopted those documents, I've said that a lot to funders. We have currently a pending application with the state to reconstruct the Hildsburg Bridge, and we're very pleased to say that the state reached out to us last week and asked us, and I've never had this happen, they've asked us to partner with them on a statewide competition to fund rail all the way to Cloverdale. And we'll be conducting a site visit with them at the end of February here, and I hope that we're able to, I've reached out to your city manager, and we hope that we're able to capture all our concerns and reasons for wanting to have this project come here when we do that site visit. I know that some of the newer ones are emergency services. We are in a position to provide evacuation services and offered that during the Kinkaid Fire to the city of Santa Rosa. They have told us that they are interested in taking us up on that in the future, should things become necessary. And the other thing that most people don't know about our project is, we have a partnership with Sonic, where we provide dedicated dark fiber to public agencies for free, and we are continuing to install that as we go north. So, I just wanted to throw those out, and if there are other things that, that you want to make sure we're conveying to the state as we embark on this partnership towards this statewide competition, just let me know. Most people here know how to get ahold of me. But I would like to turn it over to Erin McGrath, so that she can go over the, the first bullet on that, the refinancing of the bonds and the process to get us to this decision for our financial health.
Thank you, Joanne.
Good afternoon, thanks for having us. I'll try to be very brief, because I think Joanne covered most of the most important points from a public policy point of view. From a financial point of view, all public transit and transportation, buses, trains, they all require tax support. SMART is no different. Every other commuter rail system in the country requires, is using some sort of tax support, and in California, it's primarily sales tax that supports the commuter rail. So, SMART will always need tax support into the future, and I think in 2008, when voters overwhelmingly... And I think in 2008, when voters overwhelmingly voted to fund the quarter cent sales tax, they said they wanted the train and they support the train. Where we are today is that every five years, we stop and we do a strategic plan that looks to the life of the tax to see how we're doing. And as we approached the strategic plan this year, we were looking at, number one, our costs had increased dramatically than over what we had anticipated early on in the early planning stages. And those costs are primarily related to the need for more service. As Joanne mentioned, we've put out more service than we had planned in 2008 because people asked for it. As we were opening, people asked for us to fill gaps, which we recently did. So we've added more and more service, which is more expensive. Number two is the cost of labor, as she mentioned. Number three is, you may have heard of this technology called Positive Train Control Technology, and it is the newest and most important safety improvement to railroads in a long time. And the federal government mandated it and said, you should do it, but nobody had any idea how much it would cost, nor did they actually know what it looked like. It's been a very entertaining process with the federal government. But at the end of the day, it's a very expensive system to implement and maintain. It requires a lot more people. It requires consultants who are specialists at this type of software. It requires extra technicians. So, you know, these are the main reasons why our costs have increased. And, and so what we're looking at in, as part of our strategic plan that we met with the board about six or eight times last year, going through the strategic plan and looking at our costs and looking ahead, we said, we're fine right now today, but we're looking at two or three years down the road, and our costs and our revenues, the line is crossing if you take those, those two lines. And the board has two options. One is to start cutting back services and to cut the costs that, you know, we're beginning to see, or the board can say, you know, the train is going to be here for the next 100 years if we maintain it right. Why, why not continue to invest in the train in a way that keeps it for our kids and our kids' kids? And what extending the tax does for us is to say, we are extending the debt to match the useful life of the train. So similar to if you buy a house, you don't take out a five-year mortgage, you take out a 20-year or a longer mortgage, and you, and you match those payments to the useful life of the asset that you have. Well, we have a half a billion-dollar asset that's going to be good for the next 50 to 100 years. And if we know that it needs the sales tax, we are asking the voters to extend the sales tax to match the useful life. And what that allows me to do is, the finance person, is to go back to the bond markets, resell the debt over a longer period of time, and lower our payments from 18 million a year to $6 million a year. And what that allows us to do is to plunk all that money back into operations, to continue to run the expanded service we're running, to set aside money for service to Healdsburg and Cloverdale, once we get the funds to build those, and to continue on the progress forward. I mean, we're seeing the growth in ridership, we're seeing the increased demand for the service, and it just allows us to continue on the progress we've made to date. So I'll just stop there. I don't want to overspeak and just let you know that we'll be here to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions? Okay. Members of the public, anybody wishing to make comments or ask questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmen and women. I'm here tonight to-
Alan, if you could just state your name and sign that little piece of paper there?
Alan Hempel. I'm a 20-year resident of Cloverdale and enjoying every minute of it. I've also been involved in transportation issues as a board member of the North Coast Rail Authority for about a little more time than that, 22 or 23 years, and I was the chair there for a number of years. And I've been interested and very supportive of Smart from its beginning in some of the decisions we had to make to cooperate with them. I'm here tonight representing the North Coast Coalition for Rails with Trails. You might say, well, why do you need another organization? Well, the North Coast Rail Authority has literally been converted into a trail initiative under Senator McGuire's leadership, and it has no advocacy for rail. It's been mandated to take care of the trail issues and then close its doors in a couple of years. And we don't know what's going to be left of the rail. And I'll come back to that in a few minutes, but this is all related to Smart. I left with a summary of our goals. It's called the mission statement. That's what we're about. It's, it's kind of all-inclusive in terms of rails with trails, not in place of, where feasible, and supports all type of passenger rail, including Smart and tourist trains, which could be very important to Cloverdale here at this point. I appeared last week in front of the Smart Board during the public comment period, and we had some concerns that were addressed in the companion document you have there. It's a two-page document calling the synergy between Smart and the Coalition and what we can do together. The focus of it mainly was an issue that relates here to Cloverdale. We've been in touch with Mayor Wolter and Mr. Pavelka on the Alexander Valley Resort Project, and we've been very concerned that there's been a certain resistance at the Smart staff level for a surface crossing, which is going to be not just important, but I think essential to that project going forward. I made it very clear, I'm not going to go into all the details, you can read it in the document, that this is an issue that resonates in Cloverdale, and it's important for Cloverdale. It's a major project. As a citizen here, I'm interested in it. Also, the commitment to service here, I spoke to briefly, and I said I was gratified that Smart is committed to that, but we need to see more evidence of it. And then finally, on the freight side, I had some concerns that I expressed over Smart's commitment as the possible successor to the existing contractor, and whether that would be a priority for them, particularly in light of their desire to remove turnouts in the Windsor area for a major shipper and charge them a million dollars to put it back in. So I just want you to know, I've, I've been advocating for, I think, what's important to Cloverdale. I'm going to be coming back at a future date, because this doesn't really, really relate to the agenda item here, and be looking for some support for, or not support, I think, resistance to the removal of rail from here to Willets. We've got 10 shippers up there that are landlocked. The railroad is not abandoned, in spite of what you might have heard. It is basically inactive and out of repair, but it's considered an operating railroad with the Federal Railway Administration and Surface Transportation Board. So I think there's a lot of misunderstanding on that. If you lose that railroad, you'll never get it back. Why is it important to you here? You're not in Mendocino County. It's important because you could have a tourist operation going through some of the prettiest country here, and there is interest in that on the part of at least one operator that I'm aware of. Also, you have shippers in the north end of town here who could be receiving lumber from Mendocino County. There are mills up there that are rail-locked out right now. So we're going to be very vocal on that. I told the Smart Board in my brief conversation with them that we're withholding judgment as the coalition until we see some forward movement on the Alexander Valley Resort issue and some serious discussion of that surface crossing. I'm personally going to vote for Smart, I believe in it, but my coalition has issues that need resolution with Smart. So that's it. Free to answer any questions here if you'd like, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Alan. Somebody may be asking you a question, so if you could just hang for a couple of minutes up front?
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to address this topic, please come forward? Okay, seeing no one, I'll bring it back to staff, I'm sorry, to council. Are there any questions from council?
I have one.
Yeah, okay.
This is the first I'm hearing about this contest, this statewide contest to actually bring it to Cloverdale. Can you tell me a little more about that? Is this just something to get the votes from up here, or is this real?
Oh, it's real.
How real is it, really?
Well, people who know me know I'm a little bit excited. I feel like I've been asked the prom. Nobody's bought me pearls yet, though.
Let's see the pearls.
Yeah, yes, let's see the pearls. So Senate Bill 1, which was passed 18 months or so ago, and then was confirmed through the voter Prop 6 last November, has quite a bit of money for transportation statewide. And so there, some of it is focused on rail only, and, and that is the one that we have submitted the application for the Healdsburg Bridge and Station Project. That one we'll know about in June. And, and then there's a couple more coming up. And Caltrans and the state as a whole are emphasizing rail a lot more in their thinking and their planning, as well as active transportation. But the active transportation is a little more well-known on the local level. The rail side, the state rail plan came out a couple of years ago, and they've been working hard to implement it. And they've been doing a lot of work internally in terms of prioritizing where they want to emphasize investment. And I, like you, was, we're, we're in the state rail plan. We're a project that they like. They really like the east-west connection between Novato and Solano County as well, where we own the track two-thirds of the way across. And so they've been, they gave us some funding to look at an engineering feasibility study for that project, which is on our website, and we've continued the conversation with them on that, as well as coming to Cloverdale. They just called me up literally two weeks ago and said, we would like to, this will be their first foray from the mass transit and rail side, submitting in this, in this statewide competition as a Caltrans priority. So I, I can't tell you why, other than that, I'm very consistent in my communications with them about the value of the whole project, and I've gotten kind of relentless, what am I, what am I called? I'm called the Bad Penny, I think.
Good, good.
I'm called the Bad, we're the Bad Penny. My boss and I are the Really Bad Pennies. And being, having like the long history here and knowing the area really well is good for me, because it's all about communicating the details. And so I've been pretty consistent with them since our expenditure plan was adopted. And it is a really big selling point to say, you are committed to funding the operating costs of something. It's the single biggest selling point you can provide, because that's the first question you get asked, is, if we go build this for you, can you operate it? And we haven't really had that ability until our strategic plan was adopted by our board in September. And I've, I start all my emails with that now. I start all my communications that way. So they will be coming out here to do a site visit. The applications are not due for a few months, but being that this is the first time they've attempted this sort of partnership, we thought we'd get ahead of the game. And I know there's a lot of, there's, the new local hazard mitigation plan is kicking off here for the city. There's a lot of activities in the works, so I want to make sure that they're connected and understanding the place, although I'm sure I'll be doing a lot of ghostwriting.
I think that's your biggest problem up here, is that a lot of people in Cloverdale are not going to believe you that the train is ever coming here, because they just don't think it's going to happen. When you look at $170 million, they just kind of throw their hands up. So this is the first time I've heard anything that's positive about the fact that you actually are thinking about it. Now, is this grant that you're seeking actually for that much money, $170 million?
Yeah, most of our grants are, we phase things, so we give funders options if they only want to fund a piece of it. But every little piece helps. I mean, we have to finish to Windsor, and we've got to get to Healdsburg before we can get here, so that is an example of phasing. We don't ask for the whole thing all at once. And quite frankly, nobody can build the whole thing all in one fell swoop. You've got to stage it. In terms of the reality of being able to build Smart to Cloverdale-
Yeah.
-we are very cheap in terms of particularly rail infrastructure. We're like so cheap, nobody believes us. On a per-mile basis, we're, we're able to do things in about the same rate as like Portland Light Rail was built in 1985 for the same per-mile cost as what we just built the last 48 miles. So, or 45 miles, sorry, we're, we're just starting the construction of Windsor. So we're, we're a good bargain, and the state, as well as you all, are all very interested in reducing greenhouse gas emissions. The thing that we're finding in our service so far is that we're a pretty good deal in terms of the cost to operate per passenger mile that we shift from cars to rail. So we're operating only slightly higher cost per passenger mile than Golden Gate Bus, and we just started. That was for our first year, we're $1.48 per passenger mile to operate, and Golden Gate Bus is at $1.22, and so is the ferry. So our average passenger trip is 24 miles, and as you know, Cloverdale overachieves in the average daily miles commuted. So being able to offset some trips is of interest to everybody in terms of reducing emissions. And that's the state's big focus right now.
So there is hope?
Oh, I, I'm, I wouldn't be doing this if I didn't think we could, we could build all the way to here.
Any other questions?
Sure. Sorry, Joanne, you mentioned that, you know, there's, there's interest from the state for the east-west corridor. I think one of the things that I hear, one of the misunderstandings or misrepresentations, can you, maybe your, actually, maybe your CFO wants to explain this, is that it's my understanding that you, you can't use any of the Sonoma Marin sales tax funds for that, that leg, everything would be dedicated to the north-south.
Yeah, that's correct. Measure Q cannot be spent on the east-west line, and our expenditure plan, and Erin, you can elaborate, our expenditure plan, we commit to operating the pathway, we commit to operating the rail all the way from Larkspur to Cloverdale. We, we don't have a carve-out for east-west in there.
Okay. And then just in the future, you know, what would have to be passed, or, you know, can you, can you re-explain the funding mechanism for an east-west corridor if that were, were to happen?
We've been seeking outside resources. First, we had to get our heads wrapped around what, what the project is and what it would cost. So the state was very, is, was, and is very interested and provided us with some resources to do an engineering feasibility study. And I didn't have it memorized. I think there's, there's two versions of what we could build. The, the one that is the most robust is, I think, 1.1 point, yeah, it's 1.5 billion, I think, and our timeline to build would be in the five-to-eight-year period. So, you know, there's always, again, everybody's really motivated to invest in transit, both at the state because of the greenhouse gas emission reductions, but also at the regional level. There's this, a whole host of transit-first, seamless mobility, faster Bay Area, whatever they are, we show up to all the meetings, because some of them might result in real money, and we want to be on the list for it, both for this project, but in the bigger ones, also for the east-west project. So we, we feel like we can carry our own to get to Cloverdale in a way, and the commitment that the strategic plan included was to operate all the way to Cloverdale for rail, and like I said, that is a big selling point.
And just, just one final question. Can you, and it might be a board member who would be better able to, or Farhad better able to answer this, but could you, I was wondering if you could just sort of touch on, on the cities that have seen a depot open, or, you know, downtown Santa Fel being a good example, you know, on those kind of, those concentrated urban areas, what kind of grants or, you know, development have they been able to leverage their Smart Station for? Because I, I think that's one of the stories that gets left out quite a bit in the narrative, and I'm not seeing it in, in any of the pro or con, is that, you know, rail is never about rail, rail is about real estate.
Right.
You know, and it's about placemaking, and it's about, you know, really development, especially with the light rail state, light rail proliferation that we're seeing in Florida and Texas and places like that, where you're seeing 30, 40 mile, you know, like Dallas to Houston, you're seeing, you know, southern Florida. And you're really seeing that the business of it, of rail isn't really about rail, it's really about the economic development that you see. So I'm just wondering what, you know, what some of the, the cities that we've seen on the corridor, what kind of benefits have they seen, or how have they been able to, you know, leverage Smart?
Yeah. I always think of rail as not being about, rail is about connecting people. There's someone who said something which I will not get as eloquently, but that rail is about connecting communities together. Freeways are about bypassing things to get to somewhere else as fast as you can. And if you're ever on our system, and I highly encourage you to give it a try, you'll, you'll see a lot of people you know on it, or you meet a lot of new people. It's kind of, it's a very organic festive environment a lot of times. In terms of the economic development along the corridor, it varies, and some of them are, I mean, it varies all to the positive. There's a lot- There's a lot of interest all around in what can be done around our stations. It varies from the perspective of, when we opened up in downtown San Rafael, the businesses down there, the restaurants in particular, said that, wait, I should first ask, how many of you have been down to the Puerto Rican restaurant in San Rafael on our train? Because apparently, because, because half, I know you guys have, but, because literally for a while, half the people I knew were like, "Oh yeah, I went down on the weekend and had lunch in San Rafael." So, I've heard, not just from that restaurant, but from some of the other ones down there, that their business, and particularly on the weekends, has really gone up. Because people are going there to take their, you know, meet their parent in town and go take them out to lunch or whatever. In terms of the bigger investments, it, the example that I think of is the Ronert Park example. I mean, Ronert Park asked us to change the proposed location of the station to put it closer to State Farm Drive. And if you go on the track now and you look out the window at the, it's almost like a neutron bomb went off and there's just the footprint of the State Farm building, it's huge. I just, it looked, it looks even bigger now that it's gone than, than when it was there. And the city has engaged in an entire process to create a walkable urban downtown, similar to the Windsor Town Green. And they're doing that very intentionally and they're, and they're, you know, it doesn't happen overnight and there's always political or technical or financial challenges, but they are making great progress on it. And then, just some of the other stuff that I anecdotally hear is, you know, BioMarin built or bought into a complex and is expanding it down in San Rafael. They're expanding up instead of a suburban out footprint because they want to be near SMART, they want to be able to attract employees. I mean, that's a lot of this. I would just add that one of the things I didn't mention that we're noticing in our ridership since we made the seven changes is, we have a northbound morning commute now. People are commuting north to work. And I think that, as a resident here, is very appealing. You have 40 teachers or so who commute up here for your school district. I know at least one of them on the bus every day. So, I mean, getting the access to the employee quality, qualified employees, I think you've got to be able to pull people in both directions along the corridor. And then, of course, there are two major hotel developments going in at the airport station, in part, because it's co-mingled with the airport and us. So, it provides really good regional connectivity. So, that's just some of the, I picked a few spots along the corridor, but, you know, it's different everywhere, but for sure, it's resulted in development activity and economic value along the whole corridor.
Thank you, thank you, Joanne. Melanie?
That's it, yeah.
You know, I have a couple of questions and a couple, and a couple of comments. Mona?
Yes. I just had a quick question regarding the Alexander Valley Resort. Are there conversations with, with developers in SMART? Is there going to be true interest in assisting Cloverdale in making this resort a reality in collaboration with SMART?
To my knowledge, there have been, I don't, I think there was one conversation, but I don't think there's been any substantive content proposals or discussion. I know that we had given some designs to pass them along to the developer, I believe, for what a, what a standard station looks like. Because that was where the conversation went at the time. But I don't, I don't think that there's any substantive content that we've received on any proposals. So, we're always open for conversations.
Mona, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that question. You were, about the what?
I was asking if there are some conversations regarding the Alexander Valley Resort?
Thank you.
And how would SMART be reacting to working with us on that?
You know, just a couple of things, and Mona brings up a good point, because that's my, you know, I'm really annoyed with SMART for how they're handling this particular developer. We've been working with the Alexander Valley Resort folks now for well over 10, 12 years to get this project going. And this is a catalyst not only for Cloverdale, but for the northern part of Sonoma County. I mean, this is going to be a tourist destination. If you've seen the footprint of the buildings, what it's going to look like, and if you've had the opportunity to walk the land over there. What concerns me is, not only will Cloverdale get in excess of $1 million in TOT tax, bed tax, but Sonoma County is going to share in that bed tax as well. So, there's a little bit of skin in the game for everyone here to make money off of this. But what concerns me, I guess, from what I'm hearing from the Alexander Valley Resort folks, is they're willing to do an over-grade crossing. And they're willing to build it to your specifications. What they need is a letter from you saying if and when the train comes to Cloverdale, you're going to build that over-rail crossing for us. And there seems to be some reluctance from Farhad to give us that data that we need. So, that's my big concern. The other one is, you know, we talk about getting cars off the road and tractor-trailers, yet there's a possibility that you'll be giving up the freight rights all the way up to Windsor. And I can tell you how many tractor-trailers come down with the logs and how many go back up. I'm sorry? I mean Willets, I'm sorry. All the way up to Willetts. So, for you to relinquish the rights to that track, I think would be a big mistake. But I'm more concerned right now about the Alexander Valley Resort project, and I don't know why they can't come to some agreement to give them that pass to cross over the track. That's my big pet peeve, so. You probably don't have an answer for that, I wouldn't think.
Well, as I mentioned, I think there's only been one conversation. So, I don't, you clearly have had some communications with developers since then. I don't know that we are privy to them.
Yeah. Well, I'm sorry Alan didn't get a chance to speak about that, but I know he was talking with the developer as well. We received a letter from him, and there's just no response back to him on what he needs, so.
Who's him? Alan or the developer?
Alan's not a party.
No, Alan's not a party to it. Andrew, there's no.
Andrew.
Yes. I wish Alan would have been here, because he could have given you some particulars on that.
Okay. Well, like I said, we're more than open to have further conversations. I don't know the timing of when these communications have happened, or.
Yeah. Ron, did you want to say something on that, or?
I do.
Yeah.
Ron Pavelka, I am representing the ownership group for the Alexander Valley Resort. Many of you have already been on the property recently looking at it. Pardon my hair, I've been wearing my hat all day. A couple of quick things. As we sit here today, our attorney, well, let me back up. Alexander Valley Resort Tyrus Properties, Spite Properties 2, has an at-grade EVA crossing, emergency vehicle crossing. The staff at SMART has told the ownership group and the developer, NRI, that they will not honor that, that that's considered a new crossing and that will be shut down. So, there's no ability to cross the tracks at grade as the project moves forward. If you've been on the, on the property, over 50% of the property is on the east side of the tracks. So, this does not allow someone who's putting $300 million into a project in Cloverdale, creating 300-plus jobs for several years while building the resort out, plus 100-plus homes, and over 250 full-time jobs, plus the other ancillary jobs will come from the retail establishments that are put around the resort, the developed as property. The 2006, I believe, study, TOT study called for up to $1 million in TOT. That was in 2006. This is 2020. So, we know that number is going to change significantly based on the tourism coming up here, the price per room, so on and so forth. As of right now, our legal counsel has created a document to convert the current EVA at-grade crossing to a permanent crossing for all traffic. That letter, excuse me, that document is now in the hands of the city attorney, who's reviewing it. And our intention will be to be back here with ownership and our legal counsel on the 26th of this month, at the city council meeting, to review the document, ask for the endorsement of the city council and city staff, to present that to SMART. We already have the endorsement from Supervisor Gore, and we are in discussions with our state assemblyman, our state senator, and our federal senator on endorsing this as well to move the project forward, as it will be a boon to not only Cloverdale, but all of northern Sonoma County. So, we should see you again in two weeks. Any questions?
Thank you, Ron. No, well, not for me, but council members, any questions for Ron? Ron, thank you. You're a little more eloquent than I am when, when it comes to talking about the resort. But Joanne.
It's all written down.
You wrote it down? But Joanne, that's what I'm talking about when I'm, when I, when I say I'm really concerned about SMART not giving that easement. And I'm sure there's some concern on SMART's side. Have you heard of this before going on?
I heard there was one meeting conversation between staff and the property interests. And I believe that the conversation was about the public safety concerns and that some possible alternatives were discussed. SMART provided further information to the developer about such possible alternatives. And as far as we knew, that was it. We haven't had any other communications with anybody. So, I gather that there's a lot of agitation, but again, we've not had any communications further with the developer or with the city on this, so.
Well, I, I think, from what I've heard from the developer, and I could be wrong, that, you know, they're more than willing to put in the at-grade crossing to the standards that you wish, but they prefer not to do it by today's standards, because if the train doesn't come here for another five or six years, the standards could change. And they have, they have, they have a developer now who is hot to move forward with the project. They're getting ready to pull out if they can't get that crossing.
As I said, this is all news to us, other than that one meeting took place and we provided some options. I will say that, you know, we have fixed crossings as part of the NCRAs ownership of this right-of-way up here, because we don't even own this right-of-way yet. And the state is in the mix as well. But we have fixed some of the crossings up here, like at Asti and several Litton Springs, I believe, and a few in Healdsburg, that were part of a federally funded project that we provided Measure Q towards in preparation for our service up here.
Mayor, counsel, if I, if I can interject, I just want to be mindful of the, the item that's on your agenda tonight. It's not discussion of an at-grade crossing, recognizing that it is relevant to the funding measure, but, you know, the ask tonight is, is to provide direction on the two ballot measures. We will be agendizing a staff discussion on the very item that has been brought up tonight. And I think Joanne's correct, as we've heard directly from the developer today, there's only been one meeting, informal, between the developer and SMART. Obviously, we're going to be bringing that back for council's consideration for a position on that matter at your, at your next meeting. And so, I just want to be mindful of how this item is agendized tonight.
Thank you, David, and thank you for keeping us on track. Joanne, maybe you and Ron can switch business cards or whatever, but, so let's move forward and if you can be here on the 26th, you're more than welcome, of course, to come. So, with that being said, counsel, is there any more questions on, on item, measure, Measure I? So, we're at a point now where we're either going to formally take no position, or.
Do you want to bring it back? We can bring it back to next meeting if we, if that.
It's not agendized to take any specific action tonight, but if you'd like, we could prevent, bring that back at the next meeting with.
With the three options. Okay. Well, then, staff, why don't you do that? If you could bring it back to support the measure, not support the measure, or take no position.
Well, that's, that's exactly the direction we're asking counsel tonight. If counsel feels it's important to do so, if you want to, you know, take a vote on each of the individual measures, whether, whether there's support for taking a formal position, either in support of or opposition, staff will then bring it back to, to formalize that position by resolution. Otherwise, if, if counsel indicates that, you know, they prefer not to take a position, remember, there's two ballot measures on either of those, then we would, we would not bring back a resolution for consideration. Really, we want to receive your direction so that we can affirmatively bring back a resolution that either opposes or supports the two measures again. Measure G, which is the fire service tax, or Measure I, which is a renewal of the existing course of sales tax for SMART.
Okay. Thank you. Apparently, I'm not getting anything right tonight. So, we'll take a quick break after this topic and I'll, I'll chat with you, so.
Can I ask Joanne one more question? Joanne, please.
Absolutely.
So, in my mind, when it comes to whether I want to speak on behalf of the city about supporting, not supporting, or taking no position, I have one question that I'm going to kind of put you on the spot over. The teamed-up grant proposal that you're doing with Caltrans, have they given you any language that would suggest they would be less willing to move forward with you on this if they didn't have the security of 30 more years of funding from the tax base?
No, they haven't, but I can almost assure you that our, the strength of the, of us in the competition, because this is a partnership to enter into a statewide competition. And the state has shortlisted some projects for that competition, and we're the rail project that they're partnering on. The, you know, you kind of have to go in guns blazing if you want to fight the whole state for money. So, they'd, no, they haven't said they wouldn't be willing to partner with us, but the, the appeal of actually funding it would be, would be less.
Thank you.
Council members, if there's no more questions, we have three options in front of us on the screen. So, do we want to take them separately, or do we want to take them together?
Can we take, can we address G next?
Yes. So, then, let's just do Measure I right now. We just heard the presentations. So, your options are to support, to reject, or take no formal. So, Marian, why don't we start with you, one, two, or three?
I always really hate telling other people how to vote. It really rubs kind of against me. I would say, personally, I'm going to take no formal position on either Measure G or Measure I.
Okay. Melanie?
Sure. I'll just let the rest of the council know that on Monday's SC TA meeting, that board voted unanimously to support Measure I, because they definitely have some skin in the game. And, you know, I would really recommend that, that we recommend it to the voters, that we need, we need to take a step out on, on this as a council. I think that, you know, SMART has, they've performed very well. They have been in business for two years and they are doubling our investment every year. With every, every penny of, of sales tax that's raised, they're doubling it with grants. And that's an incredible investment for us. It's just too important of an investment regionally for us to say, to, you know, cut off our nose to spite our face. Again, I, you know, I think a lot of the, the information that's out there that's critical of SMART is about, you know, oh, well, the ridership isn't where, you know, we think it should be. Or, you know, it's about greenhouse gas emissions, or it's about, you know, car trips. It's, it's, it's really not about those things. It's really about economic development for our region. And I think it's appropriate for a city to step up and say, "We're going to put our money where our mouth is. We're going to support this project." Because, you know, instead of asking, I mean, actually, I made a pledge to Farhad on Monday and I said, you know, besides the fact that it was his birthday, you know, "I'm never going to ask you when SMART's coming to Cloverdale." I think Joanne's probably going to have that answer first, and she's probably going to tell us first, because that's not the appropriate question. The appropriate question is, what can Cloverdale do to help you, SMART, get, get SMART to get the train to Cloverdale? Also, I'm, I'm glad that we had an opportunity for, you know, Joanne and, and staff to hear, you know, what some of the concerns are around Alexander Valley Resort, because I think everybody appreciates what an economic boon that's going to be to all of us. But I'm very wary of saying there's going, there should be any kind of quid pro quo, like we're. But I'm very wary of saying there should be any kind of quid pro quo, like, we want our way on an at-grade crossing, or we're not going to support Measure I. I think that's unprofessional, and it's not in our interest, and it's bad, and it's being bad, and it's in bad faith with our partner, and our partner is SMART on this. So, you know, for that reason, I think it's appropriate for us to, you know, take a leadership position on this, say that, you know, we have faith in our-- what, we have five SMART residents living here, or SMART five employees living in Cloverdale? That's not a coincidence. They have faith in what they're doing. They have inside information. I'd say I'm putting my money on SMART, so I think we should step out and support Measure I.
Okay, so on Measure I, you're saying yes. Jason?
So I actually find myself quite surprised to say this, because I really have to agree with Marian, that I don't find myself telling people how to vote on these measures. However, when I reflect on my last year on council, I tend to have taken a position to give people the tools they need to move forward. And had there not been dialogue this evening regarding the potential for a grant to actually bring this train to Cloverdale, and the opportunity to give them support for the tools that they need, I find myself going against what I would consider my norm. And I'm going to go ahead and say, let's bring back a draft to support it.
Martha?
Well, I know for experience-- by experience regarding Bart, Marin County should have benefited from that, and it didn't. This is an opportunity for us to really encourage growth, not only for transportation, but also for our regional development. I'm not telling people how to vote. I'm just saying, I suggest that you seriously consider supporting Measure I.
Okay, so I'll take that as a support.
Yes, it is.
And I'm taking no position. So bring back a resolution to support for Measure I. Okay, how about Measure G? Marian, you already said no. Melanie?
Well, I actually had a question for the city manager. In the staff presentation, if we could kind of go back to that on Measure G, did I hear-- did I hear us say that Cloverdale Fire District is not subject to requirement of working toward consolidation? Because it was my understand--
I did see that in the presentation, and I think it's reflected in-- because of the language, that cities are not subject to it, but in this case, we are. We're not a city fire district.
Right.
And we're-- we have Cloverdale Fire-- we're not a-- the city doesn't maintain the fire service, so therefore, the fire district is subject to the consolidation provision.
Yeah, that was a little misleading, so.
I thought so, too.
Yeah, okay, so that clarifies--
And that's been a conversation with the fire district as well, over that provision.
Okay.
Can I ask one question, too?
Oh, please.
I'm curious as to-- I was looking over how they split the money up, and I couldn't quite figure out why Geyserville was getting quite a bit more than we were. And they have a fairly new fire station like we do, too, but some of the allocations didn't make sense to me in looking at how things were allocated.
The allocation was developed by a party that was put together at the direction of the Board of Supervisors that consisted of fire chiefs. And the fire chiefs developed the expenditure plan and the percentages. I don't have-- staff doesn't have the benefit of being part of that conversation and how--
With our chief there?
Our chief was not part of that.
I didn't think so, yeah.
And I think the answer, I believe, is in the ballot language, and I think it's because they're going to build another station.
Right.
And I just am having trouble finding it right now.
Chalk Hill.
But, yeah, another-- I think that's it.
It is.
Yeah, that's it.
I didn't hear that, please.
Chalk Hill.
They're going to build another, like, a substation at Chalk Hill in addition to that new station that's already in downtown Geyserville.
The Geyserville Fire Station did-- went through a merger process to take in Knights Valley, so that it could be reflective of this newer, larger district that has since been formed.
And I have a question.
Sure.
Regarding this measure, is there any way that there could be any amendments to it? Are you preview of any of that?
My understanding is that the Board of Supervisors adopted the ordinance that became the ballot language, and at this time, there is no provision to actually change the language on the ballot, whether the language can be-- I'm not sure that the language itself can be amended without going back up to the voters, but there is quite a leeway within the ordinance itself to, again, that board that was established to oversee its implementation will have the opportunity to change the formula that allocates the funds. That's something that's in the language itself.
Okay, thank you. I had another question for David.
Okay.
You know, we saw pretty clearly how SMART was able to-- is able to leverage their quarter cent sales tax. There's just no detail in this report about how the county looks, is looking to leverage this half cent sales tax. Did you have any additional information on that?
I do not have any additional information.
For, like, grants or something?
Yeah, for grants and things like that. I mean, I'm assuming that they could then apply to CalFire grants or, you know, fire prevention grants with some of this money, but there's just-- there's no detail on it.
There isn't at all. Can I agree?
I think that's an accurate assessment, Councilmember Bagby. I mean, I will say, in general, when you do have a funding source and you can show that is leverage for a grant, usually there is a catch match, especially on the fire equipment side, or also on the vegetation management. We know there are programs out there for that, that, you know, it could help to multiply the impact if they had that revenue stream. But there's really no discussion, I think, in the ballot measure itself, nor did we hear from the fire service agencies that that was part of the plan, because we know a big aspect of the expenditure plan really goes to retention and development of new staff.
New staff.
And that's not always something that you can seek grants for, for long-term anyways, if you're very short-term.
So we're potential-- can I just wrap up?
Yeah, and then we're going to do--
So then, potentially, where does that put us on our-- how much ceiling is left for sales tax? Let's just say SMART, let's say Measure I passes, that's the quarter cent, because they are losing their quarter cent that they get from the SC TA measure M funding in, like, I think it's like 2022. Because there is a carve-out in that existing quarter cent sales tax for SMART that will go away when the SC TA measure is sent out to the voters. That's public knowledge. So where does-- if everything passes, where does that put us on our maximum?
My understanding that it should-- should the measure pass, we are still preserve the opportunity to have up to a 1% sales tax.
So it leaves 1%?
Leaves 1%.
Okay.
Okay, so Melanie, how do you feel on that? Measure G?
So that answers a lot of questions. And I hate to compare apples to oranges here, but there is something that really-- that's really starkly different between these two. I mean, they're both sales tax measures. Measure G is a full half-- I have to say, it's a full half cent, but that's a lot.
That's a lot.
And it is really huge. And I, first of all, I'm looking at-- looking at the staff report and the packet and the actual measure language, and also the total lack of public outreach that the county performed on our behalf, because they're acting for us. And I don't think they've learned their lesson from their failed streets measure from several years ago. They had a complete bust when they brought out the library measure the first time. They had a complete bust when they brought out the parks measure the first time. And then they went back, they said, okay, why did this-- why did these fail terribly? It's because they did a terrible job at outreach, and it was a terrible overreach, and they didn't define exactly what they were going to do with the money. They're doing this all over again in Measure G. And I think, I mean, unfortunately, I think it might pass because rightfully so, people are freaked out about fire. We should be freaked out about fire. But it's so regressive in nature. I think that a measure like this should be based on your parcel taxes, should be-- the land share of it should be paid for by the property owners, because they're the ones with the most skin in the game. Whereas I look at SMART, and I look at how they're leveraging money, I look at how that is an-- that's an investment in which a rising tide really does raise all boats. It really does give us economic development. It really does develop our-- the complexity of our economy. I'm afraid that we're going to get so used to paying that half cent on Measure G, and our budgets are just going to get bloated. I don't think-- I think it should be a priority, but I think this is a terrible way to do it, and I'm very disappointed that the supervisors are kind of pushing this on us. Unfortunately, I think it's going to pass, but it just isn't something that I can support. I don't like how they did it. I don't like the measure and how it's laid out, and it's just something that I don't think, as a small city, we should be supporting.
Okay, so that's a no?
That's a no for me.
Okay, that's not even a no opinion. It's a definite no.
It's a no.
Okay, Jason?
No position.
No position. Martha?
I have a question regarding the facilities. Do we need to pay anything on that Cloverdale station? Is that something that--
On our fire station?
Yeah. Or is that something that is independent from our expenses?
The fire station was paid for out of redevelopment money.
So it's totally paid?
It's totally paid for.
Okay.
And if the fire district, for any particular reason, ceases to exist, that property reverts back to the city.
Okay.
David?
That's great.
Okay. So how do you feel about this issue?
Well, I feel, again, that consolidation will be good. However, I don't like that it's not clear, the distribution of funds, and that we were not consulted. This is kind of a-- we had a-- we had an emergency, we had to come with a solution, and it was not thought out thoroughly, considering all those of us who would be impacted by it. And we have so very many other needs. I just didn't like the process. I believe in consolidation. However, I don't think that I would be open to support it.
Okay, so that's a no. Okay. And I'm going to-- I'm going to vote no position. So no resolution comes back on that as--
What about Marian?
She already said, I mean, both of them.
She has.
She said no. Okay, so we're going to come back with a positive resolution, a resolution to support for SMART, and nothing for Measure G. And don't get the impression that I'm against SMART. I just think we all have to work collaboratively, and this is a win for Cloverdale, and we need that over grade crossing. So at grade, win it.
Mayor, Council, if I can, just to clarify the position on Measure I, we heard three members indicate support and two no positions, so therefore, it triggers staff's direction to bring back a resolution of support--
Right.
--for Measure I. For Measure G, we heard three no positions and two positions of no, and therefore, no position prevails, and therefore, we won't bring back a resolution on that, on that particular, on Measure G.
Okay. All right, staff, we're going to take a five-minute break so we can get rid of the screen. Joanne, thank you for coming up, well, thank you for coming home early, and hopefully we'll see you maybe on the 26th.
We'll see what we can do. Thank you for the opportunity to brief you on our--
Yeah, and thank you for meeting Ron.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Chief, we'll get you out of here, please.
It's part of the process. You coming back? It's okay. You go. The chief said it was all important.
How can you read this?
[inaudible]
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 Mark, please, oh, please.
March, please, oh, please.
Yeah.
I don't know where Mary Ann is, but...
Oh, she's...
Mark, can you, can you move that thing in, please?
I think, I think I left my coat in the car.
Jeff, Jeff, can you go get the blanket for James?
Stop.
Can I just show you on the map?
I have a...
Not, you have the I, gee, oh, you, you have the I three, yeah. Yeah, it's like if we have...
I tell you what, I sat next to Mark, stayed in the camp.
Are you freezing?
No, he will keep you happy the whole damn time. You can better remember it.
I'm just kidding. If I had the, if you had the bolt with us, we'd have a little blanket in the back.
Okay.
Let's see.
No, we're on number 11.
We are. Yes, sir.
All right.
Let's move.
Marta, you ready?
Oh, is she recusing herself?
Do you need a couple more minutes?
That's okay.
No, do you need a couple more minutes? Okay.
Happy birthday.
Just a couple more minutes and we'll be back.
Yeah, she's, she's recusing herself. That's item 11. We're taking that next time.
I have to tell you what, who's ready for citrus there? This'll be a corn dog, probably Six with my name all over.
Six.
Right from there, the fair's still... We live within walking distance, so we are totally in the stamp can. We come back for dinner, funnel cake by eight.
Youth is wasted on the end.
Citrus fair. I wanna see you eat those six corn dogs and get on that spinny ride. No.
I doubt.
I know, but my wife warned me, she goes, "You know Wes is gonna wanna ride rides with you this year." And I about, I about got sick at the fair. I guess I haven't ridden rides in a while. We took 'em to the Sonoma County Fair.
It's not...
And, and all they do is spin.
Right.
You know what I'm saying?
They start to catch up, then you get older.
Got the beer booths this year, I hope, lines club, huh? Out there staring at the shoe. Got a good beer booth this year.
And you were in there, man? It's just a lot of... Why do you have to try to...
A few beers.
It's not a big deal, Gus. Hopefully.
You come into the, uh, the VIP...
You put the weapon down, captured some...
I don't know about that. Oh, no, I'll stop by, yeah. Oh, I'll stop by, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Cause I don't know if... I'm gonna... I'm writing this on the... Are you riding the parade this year, or are you...
I'm walking with the summer jets.
You, are you still okay with my son driving?
Well, you're gonna have your own car.
Oh, cool.
Cause I have too many cars now.
Okay, cool.
Be better. Well, Wes is fun.
Yeah, you were...
Okay, Marta?
That was a blouse. Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, let's reconvene the meeting. Um, I mean, let the records reflect, please, that, uh, Councilmember Brigham has recused herself from this item, uh, due to the fact it's, uh, um, very close to her property. So this is item number 11, and it's the Affordable Housing Regulatory Agreement. Um, and, um, we have a public hearing on this, and this is, uh, Kevin, this is your item. I know we're gonna open it, the public hearings, and we're gonna continue it. So do we give any report at all on this?
Mayor, we are, we are gonna report, uh, on this, um, at the February 26 council meeting.
Okay.
Uh, we're just requesting tonight that, um, you, you obviously open the public hearing, allow for any public comments.
Okay.
But then otherwise, bring it back.
Thank you. Um, and the reason we're doing that is, I, I believe we're still waiting for some paperwork on this item. So does anyone wanna speak to this item? Seeing no one, we're gonna go ahead and keep it open, and we're gonna continue it to February 26th.
Mayor, if I may, um, I don't need roll call, but I do need a motion and a second.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Motion to continue?
Second.
Okay. And Marta, I'm, I'm in favor of you?
Yes.
Okay, so you, you've got it, okay.
Thank you.
Uh, item number 12 is the Second Street City Park Master Plan and the, uh, sequer mitigated negative declaration.
She's going to get her... I'm coming.
And this item, I didn't switch, Jason. Sorry. And this item is, Kevin, this is yours?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor, Councilmembers, uh, this item is the formal adoption of the Second Street Master Plan and the mitigated negative declaration. So there's two resolutions included in the staff report. The first is the adopting of the mitigated neg-deck, and the second is adopting the master, Second Street Master Plan. You may recall, we were, uh, before the council about a year ago, and we had a formal discussion of the ins and outs of the plans. We had the consultants here at that time, and, um, we took some comments, uh, but at that point, we didn't have the sequo completed. So since we've, we've completed an in-house mitigated neg-deck, circulated it for the requisite 20 days, did not receive any comments. Uh, we did take the, the plan to the Planning Commission, and they did come up with a few comments. I'd like to run through those real quick. There was a, a desire to have a, as a location for an EV charging station in the parking lot. Uh, they would like to see some photovoltaic use on the snack shack. Also, the, uh, there was a request that there be a plaque installed by the scouts, the scouts cabin recognizing the Lions and Reese's contribution to its construction. And then the, uh, the other, sort of the bigger one would be the, uh, request to remove the volleyball court with a dog park. Uh, so we have these from the Planning Commission, and we said we would report them to you. If you want to, uh, address these, there's a couple ways we can do it. We do have the plan in Word form, so we could make some amendments to the plan and include those. Or, um, as the city manager suggested, we could add an appendix noting the Planning Commission's comments and include that in the, the plan itself. So again, we have two resolutions. Um, this can, this pretty much concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, please.
Um, one question, um, the, um, if we included those, would they be etched in stone, that they would be part of the plan? Cause there's a couple I'm not too comfortable with here.
Well, the plan, the plan is definitely going to change. I mean, it's very conceptual in nature to begin with, so, I mean, I would, I don't know that everything that's in that plan will be built exactly as, as it's shown, but it really does give us an opportunity to seek, seek grants and other funding because we have a plan in place. I don't think anything really is etched in stone in there. Uh, the easy way would be that we could just add an appendix saying, "The Planning Commission reviewed it on this date, provided a resolution, and offered these comments." That might be a way to, you know, recognize their comments, uh, in the document.
Okay, I'm just concerned about item number, uh, uh, four with the dog park replacing the volleyball. You, you know, and that volleyball court is used. Um, and, um, I don't want people thinking, "Oh, we're gonna have a, a dog park there," when in fact, it's, really hasn't been considered either way yet, so...
Yeah, I think the way we would suggest it, just to say, "These were the Planning Commission's comments. For the record, we'll keep them in the document themselves." And, um, there was the comment made that the dog park was one of the higher things ranking on the, the survey, that the community survey that was conducted. So, uh, there'd be some recognition of that, but that's, that, our suggestion is, is the appendix approach.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Cruz?
Yeah, um, you know, I'm a dog owner, and I'm, I'm not in favor of having the dog park in lieu of the volleyball court, because one of the situations that we have here in town is the fact that we don't have enough events and activities for youth. And this would be removing an opportunity for youth and also removing an opportunity for grants, that we could say, um, you know, this would enhance, uh, the life of, of youth and opportunities. So I'm very uncomfortable with number four. I want a dog park in Cloverdale, but I don't necessarily want it there.
Councilmember Turner?
Yeah, I had a question. Um, this is in regards to the same topic, but I recall most of the desire for a dog park included, um, enough space for, for both small dogs and larger dogs, and the ideal scenario was for them to be segregated. And either Mark or, or possibly David, can you remind me what the recommended acreage is to achieve that goal? Was it something like a half acre you kinda need to really do? Do you remember the, the dialogue we had over that? I'm kinda putting you guys on the spot, I know, but I, I don't even think that the, the area that's allotted here would, would, would afford half the criteria that people were looking for in a dog park.
You're correct. Uh, basically, there would be a pen rather than a park. And so if you really want your dog to get out and run, you need space. And the, the city park doesn't afford that kinda space, so that's why it's, you know, it was never considered as part of the master plan. Uh, it, it just doesn't fit.
And, and so it wasn't necessarily that, that the ranking was being ignored, it was that, understanding it was a high-ranking item, we just couldn't logistically fit it in at the time, therefore, we moved down on the priority list.
That's correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mary Ann?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Councilmember Bagby?
I have to say, I agree with your assessment. I'm comfortable with the first three, but, um, as far as, you know, replacing it, the volleyball court with a dog park, people use that, people use it all the time on the weekends, um, at parties, and we, we needed more opportunities for, for fitness and activity for kids and families, not fewer, so, um, but I, you know, I also understand that, also being a dog owner, um, uh, or a dog parent, it's probably more like it, um, I, I, I really understand, and I'm sympathizing with folks who are just, you know, always bringing this up. I don't know if they understand exactly how much support they have amongst the council for a dog park. The issue is, we wanna see it in the right place, and we, because we don't wanna, you know, have a, a snag or a misstep, we wanna get it, get it done right the first time and have something that everybody can enjoy. But, I mean, I'm committed to it, but to me, the right place, it has to be at the right, and with the right amount of space. Something for small dogs, something for, and something for larger dogs.
And I've already expressed my opinion, so, um, yes?
I have a comment, just a, a quick comment on, on item number three. Uh, just to remind, uh, council that the scout cabin is gonna be rebuilt, and so it, part of the master plan is to relocate it, you know, and, and rebuild it. And so a plaque on a non-existing building will be a little bit challenging.
I noticed that, actually, and I figured that a plaque saying that, indicating their history and commitment to the scout cabin, I think would be fine with me.
Yeah, and I like the, the sheet metal work that you're doing on the, on the, on the scout cabin. It really looks appealing. Are we gonna paint it, or are we just gonna leave it?
It's, it's called varman protection.
Yeah. Are we just gonna leave it, uh, that color? Shiny metal? No?
We'll paint it, we'll tone it down.
Yeah, okay. Well, the whole building should be painted on. Uh, you know, I'm surprised none of the service clubs have come forward to help do that, so, um, okay. All right, uh, councilmembers, uh, do we wanna remove item number four and leave the others, or, Kevin, what do you suggest? Leave all four or drop number four?
Well, given the, the nature of the plan, it's really, um, it is in large part, somewhat of a conceptual plan. I mean, I think it would be up to the council if you wanted to, to keep those comments in there. I don't think it's going to hurt anything if you did.
Yeah, a lot of the comments made here are really design details that, you know, the master plan really doesn't cover those per se. It's just kinda allocating parts of the park for certain concepts right now.
Okay, thank you. Well, then we have, uh, two resolutions.
I'll offer the resolution. First one is the City of Council Planning Commission Resolution Number 152019. Is that the one we're talking about?
No, that, that's, that was the Planning Commission.
That was the Planning Commission.
It's on page...
157.
157.
Got it. Um, City Cloverdale, City Council Resolution, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale, adopting a mitigated negative declaration for the streets, the first...
For the street? The street, city park?
The street, city park.
First street, second street.
Second street, city park, master plan. So there's a typo there.
I'll second that.
But we do need to add the Planning Commission's remarks.
Yeah. Um, can we have a roll call? And just, you know, that has to be corrected, so, okay.
Yes, so with the correction, uh, Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye, but I would like to make sure there's a comment that we were not happy with item four.
Vice Mayor Turner?
Well, am I voting to also add in the specific comment that we're not happy with it, or is Councilmember Cruz just...
No, that's...
I check the comments for the minutes.
Thank you. Aye.
It's not part of the resolution. Okay. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the next one is on, um, page 159.
That's, uh, City Council, uh, City of Cloverdale, City Council Resolution, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale, adopting the Second Street City Park Master Plan.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
And Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm... Next, item 13, Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance, Adding a Section Entitled "Right to Industry" Ordinance. And this item belongs to, Kevin, boy, you got a lot tonight.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Mayor, councilmembers, uh, this is, this item is a proposed introduction of a right to industry ordinance. Um, this item was, uh, brought up through the subcommittee and, and, and discussed at two separate subcommittees, as well as two separate Planning Commission meetings where input was gathered. Um, it has been refined down to, from its, uh, original state to a very simple ordinance. I'd like to just, uh, quickly go through what it is. In, the, the purpose of it really is to, uh, avoid conflicts between residential and industrial uses, uh, to disclose that to property owners within 300 feet of residentially zoned areas or current residential operations, uh, that they could be subject to, um, annoyances, as it says in the ordinance. And it clarifies on, uh, which circumstances, uh, something can actually be considered a nuisance. So just real quick, the disclosure part, it happens in a number of different ways. Um, so this again is any residential use within 300 feet of a current resident, uh, industrial, uh, operation or zoned. So when a home is sold, that would be on the real estate agent to disclose that. Now, some of these are gonna be, uh, you know, I don't know how, some of them are a little harder to enforce than others, cause some of them are really gonna be incumbent on real, uh, other people to make the disclosure, but this, um, this is the way that it's written. So if it's a new subdivision, we'll put a note on the final map, so that will be there for, uh, all, all eternity. If it's, just say it's a use permit or design review for a multifamily project within 300 feet of, um, resident, or, excuse me, industrial area, it would be a condition of approval that the leasing agent disclose to anyone who's, would potentially live in a multifamily that what is nearby the industrial use. Uh, if it's a rental, it would be on, it'd be incumbent on the landlord. And if it's a building permit, so issuing a building permit for a residential home within 300 feet, again, of the industrial area, the city would provide a disclosure statement. Um, it also helps define what a nuisance is. So if there is an industrial operation that's been up and running for three years in compliance with all the, the use permits, state laws, all those types of things, um, it would not be considered a nuisance after that point. So if somebody comes in subsequent to that, after that three years, uh, they would need to, they could not claim a nuisance, um, because it's been up and running for three years, and that's the way the ordinance is written. And the, the Planning Commission did debate that timeframe a little bit and come up with that, uh, three years. So our recommendation tonight is that you introduce and conduct the first reading of the Right to Industry Ordinance. Um, if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you, Kevin. Councilmember Cruz?
Yes, I, I really want to know why three years.
Well, I think it's, the discussion of the Planning Commission was, you know, it, that gives it enough time to be up and running, so we, maybe they could get all the wrinkles out of their operations, so we would know that if there was any, uh, violations of a use permit, all of that would be vetted out by a, a three-year time period. It could be shorter, or it could be longer, but, um, I don't think there was any magic to the number, but I think that was kind of the thinking, that it was enough time to, to, to get an operation up and running, to understand what it is and how it operates, and make sure that it's complying with any use permits or state, state regulations or otherwise.
Were there any industry individuals, um, who spoke on that item?
Well, Mr. Reiser, who's here tonight, has been, uh, a, a big advocate of this, and he's, uh, the one who's really been more outspoken than, than any other industrial use in town, so...
So, um, may I ask, Mr. Reiser, three years?
Marta, why don't we finish with the council, and then we'll invite him up, okay?
Okay.
Councilmember Turner?
Thanks.
Yeah, um, so recognizing that notification will fall on entities that are out of the city's control, that does not negate that the ordinance prevents nuisance complaints. It would put the accountability on those third parties to then have to answer to a client that they chose not to disclose it to. It does not take away from the ordinance, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah. Councilmember Brigham?
Uh, the three-year thing, um, I'm way in favor of this. I think it's long overdue in our community. Um, but I'm curious, the three-year thing again, um, is that retroactive? We have some people who have had industry in areas that are developing now, and they've been there much longer than three years, actually. Um, so are they automatically grandfathered in?
That, my interpretation would be that they would.
They would be grandfathered in?
If, if they have been operating for over three years with a good track record and complying with their use permit, then they would be grandfathered in.
Yeah, cause my, may I, my, my, my interpretation from the subcommittees and then attending the, the Planning Commission was, we wanted to offer opportunity on both sides to where you couldn't come in, establish your business, and say, "Okay, I'm protected." You had to have three years of working with your neighbors and, and hearing what their concerns might be in areas that were already developed. You, you do bring up a very interesting point, where development is happening in concert where their...
Right.
Where their, uh, their, their business already exists. But I also found that I interpreted as they would be grandfathered as well because they had been operating longer than three years.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh.
Councilmember Bagby?
Oh, yes, I, um, very happy to see this finally come forward. I think I remember seeing it when Merle brought, first brought it to Planning CDA, so...
It's been a long time.
It's been a while. Government does take a long time. So, um, yeah, like, I'm, I'm happy to see this moving forward. So I think any way that we, any, any way that we can, um, help with, um, diffusing, um, confrontation, I think it's in our best interest, and it's the best interest of our business community as well as our residents, so...
Okay. Marta?
Yeah, I have a question, and it's, um, thinking of what Mary Ann said also. Uh, what if we have, uh, new additions to the city down the road and their industrial practices already? Are we, are this going to be impacted? Like, for example, we have new annexations in the south part of Cloverdale, and their industrial practices there. How is that gonna impact them? them?
On an annexation, you're talking about?
Yes, yes, on their new annexation.
I would think part of their annexation, you know, they agree to the ordinances and...
Oh, no, 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 it's not that they agree or not. It's like, is this ordinance going to see them? Because this was not an original industrial zone. We have annexation on an area that was not determined, that was not, you know, labeled as industrial zone. So how are we going to protect those businesses that are in new annexation? See what I'm calling?
So, if there was an annexation, they would come in and be subject to any existing ordinance. And while the noticing in here is prospective, the policy is, you know, and that describes a nuisance policy, that, you know, goes into effect as soon as it's adopted or as soon as someone is, you know, annexed into the city, they're subject to that in that three-year...
Oh, okay, so they will be protected. That's my concern.
Okay, then let's open it up to the public. Mr. Reiser, would you like to say something, or? And how is Bruce doing?
He's doing well, thanks for asking. He's actually picking him up at the airport Friday, so he'll be back.
Oh, good.
He doesn't miss the parade.
He's here for the parade, or is he going to be home permanently?
He said he wanted to drive the truck to the parade, but I think he was being a little aggressive.
I can't wait till that motor gets put in his car, but we're way off topic now, but that thing is mean.
We're hauling it over to Sacramento, yeah. Stroke or not, that's happening. So, first of all, councilmembers, thank you for addressing this. Everybody's spent a lot of time on it and really vetted it out. The question that's coming up tonight is the three-year thing. And the way that I see it is that industry needs to prove itself. We need to be good neighbors. And Councilman Turner's position of, we can't just walk in and say, okay, we're protected by this. And some bad player will eventually try that. So, you know, we need to prove, the city of Cloverdale is essentially vouching for its industry with this ordinance, saying that we're good players. And we need to be responsible. So, I don't have any problem with the three-year thing. It's never going to impact me, because we've been here for so long. But, you know, I'm a big supporter of industry, and I don't see why somebody would have a problem with that. So, again, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have a question for...
No, 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 it was the three-year.
Okay.
And he answered it. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wanting to address this? Okay, seeing no one, I'll bring it back, and I guess we have the first reading on page...
It's on page...
Three, three, three.
Three, 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 yep. If no one else will, I'll do it again.
I would be happy to make a motion.
All right, you go ahead.
I'm going to make a motion for an ordinance of the City of Cloverdale amending the Cloverdale Municipal Code to add Section One Eight Dot Two Zero Dot Zero One Zero, Right to Industry and Municipal Section, Code Section definitions, to effectuate various general plan goals, policies, and implementation measures regarding the need to establish protection for industrial uses.
And just to clarify that motion, that's a motion to introduce.
Introduce, give me, thank you.
Can we have a roll, is there a second?
I have a second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
And Mayor Walter?
Aye. Okay, moving right along. Item number fourteen, adoption of an ordinance amending sections of the Cloverdale Municipal Code, CMC, in order to implement new state law on accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. And this item belongs to Mr. Thompson, again, okay.
Thank you. Yeah, this item is a proposed zoning ordinance amendment to conform to recent changes in state laws, and there's numerous laws and senate bills and assembly bills all related to ADUs. What I'm going to do is just focus on what we have to change in our current ordinance. There's a lot of other things in the state code that we've already in compliance with, so there's about nine things we're going to be changing or asked to change. The Planning Commission did review this and provide a recommendation, a resolution of recommendation. Just another thing is, this really is coming down from the state. And really, my understanding is that if we don't amend our zoning ordinance, then their rules will basically supersede ours. So I think it's better for us to amend ours to be in conformance with the state. That's what I think. So the first one, the first one, we do have a little bit of discretion. I'd just like to hear what the council thinks about it. But you must allow an ADU and a JADU on a property. So just a reminder, a JADU is within the existing footprint of a house that's already there. There's a couple little changes with that. You don't have to provide a door. But if we continue with what we have now, because we already allow two ADUs on a site, we could potentially have four units on a property. There could be the main house, the JADU, and then another ADU that has two units in it, because we currently allow two. So that's one thing I'd like to hear what the council thinks about. The way it's written is we would continue allowing the two. That's something you could change in light of the fact that they're basically mandating that we allow a JADU. I mean, in my mind, a JADU is really, I don't know the difference between renting a room and a JADU. I think it might be that they want to count those units, but that's something that we can come back and talk about. So the second amendment that we're going to be asking to do is, we can't set, the maximum size can't be less than eight hundred and fifty square feet, or a thousand square feet if it contains one or more, or more than one bedroom. So we currently allow eight hundred square foot unit with, if the lot is six thousand square feet. So we have to bump that up to eight fifty. That's a pretty, that's a pretty simple one. ADUs can't be subject to lot coverage requirements. We don't, we don't count lot coverage in our residential, but we do count lot coverage in our commercial and industrial, commercial zones. And we, these are allowed in commercial zones, so we'll have to eliminate that lot coverage provision for the commercial zones. The next one's pretty simple. We require a four-foot setback, or a five-foot setback. The state is saying four, so you can get to a four-foot setback on an ADU. ADUs must be allowed on all multi-family lots. What we have in our code is that an ADU has to accompany a single-family home. So if we allow them on multi-family lots, there's not necessarily a single-family home there. There could be an apartment building or something different. So we just need to eliminate that language that it, there has to be a single-family home on the lot in order to get an ADU permit. No replacement parking can be required if a carport is converted or demolished. So what we have in our code is that if you convert your garage, you have to provide a parking space elsewhere on the lot. We can't allow that anymore, so there won't be any parking required. Amendment number seven is, has to do with manufactured homes, and I think this is something that's, maybe we should have been changed in our code a few years back, when the state kind of said that you have to allow manufactured homes without any type of discretionary permit. I don't know that, I don't think that was ever done. So this is just a reemphasis of that, so that you could put a manufactured home on a lot without a use permit, where currently it's allowed, a use permit is required. We're going to get rid of that use permit requirement. And again, I think we should have done that several years back, actually. So this one is actually the only one that seems a little bit more restrictive. For an attached ADU, the total floor area cannot exceed fifty percent of the existing primary dwelling unit. We don't really have any language about that in there, so we'll add some language there. And then number nine is kind of a strange one. I'm still trying to kind of figure out what it is, but it's, if you build an ADU and then you convert it back to something else, whatever you're converting it back to could be subject to the zoning. So if it was an ADU and a garage, and then you convert it back to living space as part of your home, then you're going to be subject to that parking. I don't really see this happening very often. I don't know how many people are going to convert from an ADU back, but it is in there, and so that is one of our recommended amendments. And then just, we've talked a little bit about the other, this other interesting one that we don't really have to amend anything, is any ADU, seven hundred and fifty square feet or less, is not subject to development impact fees. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. We have discussed it a little bit. There's not a ton of them out there, so I don't think it's a big impact, but it's really a good deal. And I know the council lowered the fees on the ADUs a few years back, and we really have a good deal in town still in terms of our impact fees for ADUs. It's a, it's a really good price. So the recommendation tonight is that you introduce the ordinance by motion and conduct the first reading. And, yeah, I'll close my presentation.
Thank you. Councilmembers, questions? Why don't we start with Mary Ann this time?
I read through the whole thing two or three times, because you know I'm interested in this. And I'm talking to two or three groups of people who are looking right now for a piece of property where they can do sort of tiny home villages. And they do not want a main house on the property. They just want to be able to place five, or six, or ten, or fifteen homes on a piece of property. There's nothing in here about any kind of way we would look differently at that than we would say as a trailer park, or what, anything else. So what, I just, I'm curious as to thoughts on how we feel about, I mean, everybody's doing it now. You go to Fort Bragg, you go even in, in less expensive communities than us, tiny home villages, especially for older people who are retiring, is a very attractive option. So how do you want to address that as a council in this kind of a situation?
Does it become a commercial endeavor at that point? You have one person collecting rent from several occupants, and can we look at it from that point of view?
It can be, it can be different in many different ways, but most of these folks that I'm talking to, actually, all, three of the groups are older people who want to downsize and cut their expenses, so they want to put many on one property.
So, council, that would just be considered a regular multi-family project under the city's existing code. So separate from this ordinance, it would just be, you know, if it's a multi-zone for multi, multi-unit residential, it would be permitted subject to the, you know, applicable development standards.
That's, I get that. But I just wonder if we wanted to include something in here about that, because you lose that ability then to not be charged those hookup fees. It becomes a different animal then. So that, that's what I'm getting at, is that exact thing, is if you just put one or two on your property and you stay within the rules, you aren't paying hardly anything. So, this is, and maybe I'm looking at it weirdly, I don't know.
Well, let's consider what we have on the table now, and then we can come back and maybe kick that to a subcommittee at some point. Councilmember Cruz?
Yeah, you know, if it's ADU, it means that it has to have a main dwelling. So that would be a whole different project.
I get that.
And it wouldn't be covered under what state law is requiring of us. Am I reading that correct?
That's correct.
Correct. And I think if the council wants to explore that and waiving fees for those types of projects, that'd be something to direct staff to bring back separately.
Okay, so you couldn't, we couldn't conceivably include that in this kind of a thing?
Correct. And it wasn't really noticed for that sort of scope, so we'd want to bring that back separately.
Okay, well, I'll just then say that that has been brought up a number of times to me now, especially in the older community.
Councilmember Bagby, anything?
I'm just glad to see this moving forward. I guess I just had, you know, one question about the, is it item, which item was it that would say you could have up to four ADUs on a property? Which one, which, I'm trying to find the page, and I just couldn't find it.
It's number one on the...
It's that first one, okay. I re-looked at every one except for that first one, okay. So I guess the only comment I had was that, you know, and it didn't pass, but I know parts of, part of Maguire's working with Senator Weiner was to, one of the compromises around his housing bill, which hasn't gone anywhere, was allowing a fourplex in empty residential lots. And so, I don't know, I'm not, I don't feel really strongly about it either way, but I can see that in the future, that legislation, that piece is probably going to pass, because that was one of the main stumbling blocks. They thought they were going to have a lot of pushback from rural cities on that, or, you know, or just more residential-oriented cities. And there just wasn't a lot of pushback. They were kind of like, yeah, put a fourplex on a, if it's a big enough lot, it meets all requirements. So I can kind of see us moving in that direction. So I wouldn't, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it, but if there's, you know, a lot of concern about, oh, not four instead of three, then. It just, you know, to me, it just depends on the size of the lot and eligibility. So I don't have, I just don't have a major problem with it, because I can just kind of see that in the future, that's where we're going to be going anyway.
Isn't that kind of similar to what Councilmember Brigham was bringing up?
No, no, it's a different issue. No, it's a completely different issue. No, because it's, you're talking about a main house, and then you can elect, you can get three more, one JADU and one ADU, and which would be a total of four, you know, four homes on, you know, one residential lot.
Right.
As long as they don't exceed a combined.
It's like, yeah.
The combined.
And then there's the amount, yeah.
Well, the, the JADU is within the footprint of the home itself. And you had mentioned before, I think the only reason they even want that counted is so that it can be counted towards the housing needs. Councilmember Cruz?
Yeah, you know, I'm all for this. However, I'm a little concerned that there are going to be no impact fees or no using fees. And, you know, that is definitely going to impact our infrastructure. And I wonder how this is going to be addressed in the future. I mean, this is going to have to be modified. We need to have, I mean, we're going to have more sewer, we're going to have more water, we may even have more people on the streets using cars, et cetera. So infrastructure is going to be impacted one way or the other. And down the road, we're going to have to advocate for some fees for these.
So I just wanted, on, on, on Councilmember Cruz's exact topic, during the discussion over the rate study, I had brought up whether the rate study would include upcoming state legislation around ADUs and JADUs. And our city engineer believed at the time that the consultant would be taking things of all different aspects of state laws moving forward into their, their, their fee study. So that might cover water, so to speak, but there might be opportunities as other studies come up to make, you know, see if it's in the scope or not.
And I just want to comment for, for point of clarification, that the prohibition on fees is just for units that are seven hundred and fifty square foot or less. So the state is basically, as part of the legislation, put in language that says, we as a city cannot enact development impact fees for those particular units that meet that size criteria or less. So if ADU is proposed at, say, eight hundred square feet, our existing fee ordinance would apply. I think, you know, again, the spirit, if I do my best to articulate what I think the state's trying to do is, you know, address the housing crisis. But, you know, that has consequences, and I think that's what Councilmember Cruz is alluding to, is that it has potential impacts on the capacity of our water system. The legislation doesn't impact our ability to charge for the water use, and that's certainly, that's what we'll be, the rate study will be evaluating, is what's the appropriate fee for water use. It's just a capacity issue. And those impact fees help us pay for those future improvements that are really intended to address the cost of growth. So to the extent that those drive, those smaller units drive growth and, you know, operational expansions, then, then we're not, we won't be recouping some of those impact fees. But again, they put in that hard size criteria where we can't pay, where fees are not legally allowed to be charged.
Alex, did you have something to say? You covered it, okay.
We did ten ADUs last year. There was only two that were under, so typically, people try to, you know, maximize the space. There will be a few of these, but I really don't anticipate there being that many.
So, one question, and then one thing I noticed, but my question is, for the sake of everybody, Commissioner Sanders brought up a point to where he is aware of three properties where the house is built over more than one plot line. And for the most part, I don't see anywhere where that would hamstring anything, until I read the one where it said that the ADU cannot exceed, I think it's fifty percent of the existing structures, square... I think it's 50% of the existing structures square footage or footprint.
That's of the JD.
And does that create a pitfall for someone who wants to put a JADU on a wing of their house that happens to reside on the smaller plot line? And the JADU might be over 50% of the floor plan that exists on that plot line? Or with our ability as a city to review stuff like that case by case, do we have mitigative measures that don't cost the landowner an arm and a leg?
I thought, I thought at that meeting that the response was there would have to be a lot line merger, where they would actually have to merge the two lots together.
And I guess where I get a little.
And I don't know how it ever got built in the first place that way.
No, I could agree with that. And I guess the only thing that, I guess, gets into the concern over that, why I'm asking the clarifying question is, is that going to incur an excessive additional cost or a moderate additional cost? I mean, are we, I realize it's a low inventory, but it is still a represented population of the town. And do they find themselves at a built-in disadvantage for something that I don't think any, I can't explain why a house would be built over two plot lines.
I live in one that's on two lots, yeah. It goes over the lot line.
Fair enough, right? And so again, my question stands. Do you foresee any thing that's written in here that's going to all of a sudden incur them excessive fees to offer an ADU or a JADU?
A lot merger is one of the easiest. It's not even really an entitlement. It would be, there'd be some survey work. City engineer, you can chime in, but, I mean, they don't go to planning.
What would it cost?
Oh, there's a cost to it, absolutely.
Yeah, but what would it cost you?
I can't say because you're hiring a surveyor to do the lot survey.
$10,000, $20,000, $30,000?
Not that much.
Our fee is $500, $550. And then the survey would be probably a few thousand. I don't know how much.
Some of the work, the costs associated with doing the survey work is going to be based on getting proposals from a private surveyor or engineer to draw up the plat map and the legal description, the easement. And, you know, those costs obviously barrier outside our control because it's going to be a consultant with the requisite license, professional engineering license or professional land surveyor that has the qualifications to prepare those exhibits and things. But otherwise, our cost is really just to review those and ensure they're in a form that can be recorded. And we try to seek opportunities to clean those up because it also presents an issue for lenders sometimes in terms of providing loans against property that, especially if you try to sell one parcel and you have a structure that, you know, covers two properties, it becomes, it often becomes a legal issue for the property owner and then there's a desire to clean it up.
So it almost seems, and then I'll let this go, I promise. It almost seems like we're using this also as an opportunity, and this is not a facetious remark, but we're using this as an opportunity that if it comes to our attention, we're going to try and work with the homeowner to clean that up. I mean, it's a discrepancy, so to speak, that your house is built over, not your house, but the proverbial you is built over more than one plot line. Is, okay, all right, I can let this go then, thank you.
A lot of times you buy two or three lots and you build a house that covers a lot and a half or something, you know. So it overlaps.
But don't you need a, don't you need a permit to do that? And wouldn't it be picked up there? But, I don't know.
That's not my intention. But thank you, I'm ready to let this.
Are there any other questions on this item? Let's open it to the public. Anyone having any questions on the item in front of us? Seeing no one, we'll bring it back. And if there's nothing else, there's a ordinance, first reading on page 345. Introduction and first reading. Did I say that right, Alex? Thank you.
Well, if no one else is, I will. City of Cloverdale City Council and Ordinance of the City of Cloverdale amending Cloverdale Municipal Code Sections 18.09.180, accessory dwelling units 1814030. Definitions 1811050, off-street parking. Requirements by land use 1804040. Residential zoning district use regulations 1524060. Design review required and adding section 1809185. Junior accessory dwelling units to the Cloverdale Municipal Code.
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call Irene, please.
Vice Mayor Turner?
Yes.
Council member Bagby?
Aye.
Council member Brigham?
Aye.
Council member Cruz?
Aye.
And Mayor Walter?
Aye, thank you. Next item is item number 15. Consider the purchase of one Portland Lou restroom for the Cloverdale City Plaza and designate the Portland. This item is, let me see. This item is Mr. Rincona, city engineer.
Yeah, this is an exciting, exciting topic. It's about installing a public restroom in the city plaza and also designating the Portland Lou as a standard for us to go to for installing other facilities at the locations as needed. So what we have here is basically an outline of where we propose to put this in the city plaza. That's part of the attachment. The Portland Lou was selected because it's proven itself in several cities to be durable. It gets, you can do your necessities in there, maintain some privacy, but not hide yourself in there. And also, I was just providing that facility to the city plaza because city hall, although it offers a public restroom, it's not open all the time. I foresee this facility being open during daylight hours. Currently, the police do lock up our bathrooms at our city parks. And so I foresee this being the same, where they would just lock this up at night because people are not in the plaza per se at night. During large events, we would continue to require the event sponsors to put in the porta potties as they do and place them onsite for use because the Portland Lou would not be able to handle that capacity of large crowds. So again, this is just, you know, providing a facility that's proven itself to be vandal proof as to the extent possible and also not provide a place where illicit activity can occur.
Council members, any questions?
Aye, boy.
Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I was wondering how late the rooms are open in the parks? And in the plaza, maybe it could stay open a little later?
We could definitely do that. I mean, again, it's done by patrol officer, they make the rounds and they'll go in and lock the facilities. And I believe they lock up the city park around 7:00 PM. Probably, you know, and you set the hours, basically. You know, if we find that it needs to be used a little later, it can be established. But so long as we work with the police department in terms of establishing a schedule so that they can go in and secure the facility. And also in terms of its cleanliness, staff will be cleaning it every morning, making sure it's stocked. And then on weekends, if it's overused or, you know, it gets trashed, police department is more than welcome to lock it up and put an out of order sign until Monday morning.
Mary Ann, did you have a question?
Well, I'm wondering about the time open, 7 o'clock. When is the last bus run?
It should be open until the last bus is gone.
Absolutely, because one of the biggest complainers to me about not having a bathroom is city hall is closed, we get off the bus after work, and there's nowhere to use. So isn't the last bus 8 o'clock or 9 o'clock?
Have to look at the schedule.
I would like to see it stay open at least until 10 or 11 o'clock at night, minimum.
Chief, what are your thoughts on that?
I don't disagree with that, keeping it open a little later, it makes sense. We can certainly secure it as directed. I will say that do closing them at night makes sense. It's certainly something that can be entertained later for expanding that. But I think it's a good idea to take a look at the response with that time and base it on like a 10 o'clock closure for now.
Well, I think, you know, I am comfortable with it because of, number one, where it's located.
Right.
And next to, right next to the police department. It's going to have a camera on it. Hopefully, the dispatchers are going to take a glance at it once in a while. And if there is an issue, like you had said, fine, we'll try 10 o'clock. If we have a problem with it, we'll back it up. If it's okay, maybe we'll move it to 11. But I think the city parks are a completely different animal.
I do too.
Vintage metal and Second Street, they have to be locked at dusk, I think, so.
I thought the whole idea kind of of this kind of a unit was the fact that they could open it 24/7 because it's, because of just the way it's built. You know, you can see underneath it, it's not going to be something that's, you know, there's going to be some issues, but I don't see any issues like would be at, say, Ferber.
No.
And that could in fact be a council decision later, right? We would have the prerogative to say, hey, we're instructing you to leave it open 24 hours and let us know what comes up as a result, you know?
I want to make sure that everybody has read the chamber's position on this on page 460. But while we're doing that, I'd like to open it up to the public. If there's any questions, please come up and share your concerns or your support for this project. Okay, seeing no one, I'll bring it back to the city council. Do we have any other questions? Yes, go ahead.
Just a comment that the last bus is, drops off at 8:10 PM.
8:10.
8:10 on weekdays, yeah. So 9 o'clock seems like, or 8:30 seems like a reasonable time.
10.
10. 10 o'clock, but 10 o'clock, yeah. Absolutely.
Jason?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. I want to really thank the engineering staff for putting this together. There's two things that I saw as a result of our subcommittee meeting that I'm very appreciative of. Number one being that the fence in between the staging area or the square and the police department remains completely intact. The other being that the space that currently has the portable trailer will be retained to either do something with it or create more parking spots. So I am, I am in support of this current design, the way it is allocated, the way it is set on the property. I like it.
Anyone else? Okay, well, then in front of us, we have a, what do we have here? Direction, is there a resolution here?
Mayor, council, there's no resolution in the packet. It's indicated in the staff report, this would be bought back as part of the fiscal year 2021 budget and it'd be a capital improvement item. And at that time then, it would require that council provide staff authorization to actually purchase it, which would be done by resolution.
So then we're actually talking towards the end of the summer?
As currently proposed, it's really given direction to staff to put this in the budget for next year is what's identified, is recommended by the city engineer.
All right. So it's going to be a while before it's installed?
The staff did have a discussion about timeframe and because of the work that would be required to do the connection to the sanitary sewer system in the plaza and our goal of avoiding any conflicts with Friday Night Live, which start at the, you know, the end of, end of May and the procurement process with this and, you know, putting out the bid, the improvement works, it puts us in direct conflict with Friday Night Live. So we, that's why I think the city engineer is recommending that this be part of the budget process. We'll include it, we'll identify the funding and then the direction would be to, you know, to bring it back as soon as we can. We could probably begin the design work and so forth so that we're ready to do the procurement with the completion of Friday Night Live and then begin that work.
And this is 100% Quimby Act funds?
We haven't specifically identified the funding source in the agenda report. I think the direction has been Quimby, was looking at Quimby Act. There are some specific findings that are required for use of the Quimby and we just, we'd package that all up and bring that back as part of the actual purchase of the unit.
So then, just on a side note, when is that, when is your, when is your old office coming down? That I saw?
I believe, Kevin, you're looking for a permanent, we have, we still have records in there. They need to be taken out of that trailer and stored temporarily down at the corp yard until we could get another storage item there, whether it's another trailer of some sort. It would be half the size of what's there now, but we need to store city records. And whether we could put it in city hall or not, right now, city hall doesn't look viable because of the load that comes from those records. You know, we have that second floor that's just not viable for storage of such weight.
So temporarily, we'll move the records down to the corp yard, rip it down, put a new?
That's correct.
Tough shed in there or something and then put them back?
Yeah, it'd probably be a little bit tougher than a tough shed, but it'll be sufficient size to accommodate the records we have.
Okay. So staff, you have your direction? Okay. Next item is item 16. Support an appointment to the Childcare Planning Council of Sonoma County by the Sonoma County Mayors and Council Members Association Board of Directors. Irene, this is yours?
Yes. So good evening. Yes, so the item before you is to support an appointment to the Childcare Planning Council of Sonoma County. It's the annual, or excuse me, it's to fill the one position for a period of three years. It was recently vacated by a Santa Rosa council member. And initial request for letters of interest was requested. The first deadline was on January 25th. Nobody had submitted any letters of interest and then it was extended to January 29th. And actually, following that deadline, we had a recipient, which was the Santa Rosa Vice Mayor, Victoria Fleming, said she would be interested in serving on the position. Therefore, staff is just recommending to direct Mayor Walter to support the appointment of Santa Rosa Vice Mayor Victoria Fleming to the position at the Board of Directors meeting, which is scheduled for tomorrow, Friday 13th at 5:00 PM.
Council members, comments on this? I mean, it looks like there's only one applicant.
Well, and we're very lucky to have this one applicant. I know Victoria fairly well and she's a professional social worker. That's her job and she is very passionate about this issue. So our one applicant, I think, is an excellent applicant. So I'm happy to recommend her for your approval.
I also support Victoria. She's definitely a competent woman and has her heart into this position.
And Mayor, council, we, the gender report did indicate that there was no interest in the Remote Access Network Board. There was one late entry from Santa Rosa, I think maybe it's still the mayor, Mayor Schwedholm?
Yeah, oh.
But that was the only interest that may come up at the Mayor and Council Members meeting. It was, came after this agenda was published and as well as after the Mayor and Council Members Association was, agenda was posted as well. So not exactly clear on how the Mayor and Council Members are going to handle that. But given that there's only one interest, one interested party, staff expects that there would be support for that individual in that position.
Yeah, he'll probably, if it's the Eustace, he'll just throw his name in. But I definitely support Tom for that position. I think he would do a great job.
Well, as always, I hope I have some latitude if something should come up at the last minute, but I will honor the request of the city council.
Actually, I'd leave it up to your discretion if anyone else throws their name in, but yeah, I think Tom would be a great choice.
All right. And then lastly, do we, did we send a letter to the mayors and council members letting them know that if the mayor doesn't appear, that the vice mayor would step in? Or do we have to do that every year? Who the alternate is for the mayor?
Right. No, I will have to do that.
Okay.
I know they received kind of a contact sheet that states who's who, but I can send a formal letter.
There's no hurry on that. I'll be there tomorrow night, so everything is fine, so when we get to it. Council members, anything else on that item? And just about everybody's going tomorrow, right? Mark, Suzie, no? Mark? Suzie? No? Irene, you going? Good, okay. It's nice to have a good representation. And I see that we're also, in June, we're hosting the event, so...
That's correct. Staff has began discussion. We welcome input from council. Temporarily, we have, we were, or at least thus far, we were thinking, we have a recent new restaurant that has opened, and has kind of a large area that might support a Mayors and Council Members Association meeting. That's kind of what we're evaluating to see if they're available, but if council has any thoughts or recommendations on where to host, certainly let Irene know.
Is that new restaurant the Post?
El Malagro.
Oh, do you think that's, do you think that's big enough?
Yeah.
Really? Okay.
They have a back room, too.
Yeah, they have that back room.
Okay.
I, we would, we would be very, we would be the popular kids.
Yeah. Okay. Good, well, we can talk about that.
It doesn't love great Mexican food.
Okay, we've already discussed item number 17, so we're going to move on to subcommittee items. None?
I have one comment on subcommittees.
No, this is on the items. Kevin, any items that are being discussed? I believe, didn't we just add this section to the agenda?
Yeah, this is, this is a new item. It's an opportunity, when things come up at subcommittee level, to be able to have a conversation with the City Council. So in the future, as things come up, you know, sometimes issues, projects, important matters are developed at subcommittee, and it's an opportunity for us to put it on the council agenda, so that there can be, there can be at least a conversation. Just make sure council's informed.
Yeah, just to make sure we're all on the same page with that particular item, and staff isn't spinning their wheels only to come back and be rejected, so, okay.
That took away my question.
That's great.
Would it be appropriate, then, so we kind of, we missed correspondence, and I did receive the correspondence from our CPUC, Regional CPUC rep, inviting us to give feedback as a non-party member on the PSPS item, and also just to schedule something, another meeting. And actually, I was wondering if we could just put that on the agenda for Finance Police, because if it's, we're going to come forward with the letter, it's going to be something that the mayor's going to sign anyway. Maybe we just discuss it at the subcommittee, and we just knock it out that way.
I think that's a great idea. Councilmember Bagby, that we placed that discussion item on the Finance Admin and Police Subcommittee.
Then we can get it down on the 27th, that would be great.
Just for reference for the council, the California Public Utility Commission is holding formal proceedings regarding the PG&E's Public Safety Power Shut-Off Program, and there is an opportunity to participate in that formally, or to just participate informally, but as a commenter. To participate formally requires that you file as a party to the proceeding, and there's a lot of staff and legal requirements associated with that. Staff will forward to you, or ask our city attorney to share a memo with you about what it takes to become a party to a proceeding. We also researched it and determined that the City of Santa Rosa and the County of Sonoma has partnered also with Napa County to become a formal party to the proceeding, and I think they'll probably do a really good job at representing kind of our collective interests. But I think what councilmembers, Bagby's interest is, is that the City of Cloverdale can officially comment on the proceedings as, and take a position, or make comments about what we think the California Public Utility Commission may want to do to regulate or require PG&E to do in terms of PSPS actions going forward.
Just a good chance for us to comment, give our specific experience and what we'd like to see change. So, yeah, we can talk about it on the 27th, that would be great.
Okay. So that'll get on the agenda?
If we're talking about correspondence here, I put a letter in that somebody dropped off at my house today, into, you guys probably have a copy of it. A lot of the nonprofits in town are absolutely going bonkers over SB 5, and it's really causing a lot of consternation. We had reps from Cloverdale Performing Arts Center down at Luther Burbank for that update on what they really are going to do. I think it was really badly done, and it's really causing a lot of problems. It's going to affect this building considerably. We're going to have to probably stop our programming with the high school, because they even want us to make high school, like the little programs we have for the light board and stuff, they actually have to be listed now as employees, and paid workers' comp and all of the rest of it. So we're not the only nonprofit. Everybody, all the nonprofits in town, but Luther Burbank Center was packed. So this is going to be a real, real issue. Most of the nonprofits are choosing to ignore it. At this point, we have not gone that direction, but we probably should have. So I would really like, I think the conclusion of the letter that she didn't put in there was that she would like a letter written to electeds about the fact that we don't like it, and that we'd like nonprofits to be taken out of the mix somehow. So if that may be financed, some subcommittee should take that up.
My mother-in-law recently became the chair for her church, and they're experiencing the same issues when they have substitute pastors.
Yep.
And also working their thrift store, things of that nature. So where this does happen to get assigned, I'd like to, if I can, be involved, so I can be a part of that communication base to that entity as well, and maybe help guide them. They really don't have the resources to go try and fight it on their own, so to speak, but with the council's support, I'd like to try and partner with whoever might need it.
So, staff, what subcommittee do you think there should be?
Mayor, I think similarly to the proceeding issue with CPC, that this would be a Finance Admin and Police matter.
Okay.
And just for reference, it, I think it was characterized as SB 5.
It's AB 5.
It's AB 5.
Oh, sorry, AB 5, you're right.
Some have called it the Uber Rule, but this is, it modifies how workers are classified, whether, and whether they're employees or independents, and it tends to favor them being viewed as employees, which can have negative consequences, because it requires a host of regulations, and there's evidence now that it's actually having economic impact on independent consultants.
It's having a huge impact on the nonprofits.
Yeah.
Huge. I mean, their programs are getting canceled left and right, and some of them, internships and stuff are especially sad for me to see go.
We're trying to do the opposite.
Exactly. So, right, right when we are.
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes. I was wondering, Melanie, since you are more involved with the leadership at the League, has any conversation started at this?
I remember this coming up, and it's known as the Uber Rule, and I don't think that the League really anticipated its impact on nonprofits and rural areas.
And rural.
So I'd be happy to bring this up at the executive board meeting.
Yeah, it's coming up in April, right?
Yeah. Well, and actually, I can bring this up.
Yeah. So I think it would be most appropriate to address it with the League, because we, as a city, don't really have an impact on this until we have some conversations with the League. They could be our number-one advocate.
Yep.
That's their job, the lobby.
No, I can see talking to Sarah, and this is probably going to have a huge impact of unintended consequences on the Redwood Division, because we are so small and so heavily dependent. I mean, it's, yeah, this is aimed at Uber drivers, and it's hitting high school kids working at a theater. That's all wrong.
And I've already seen signatures being circulated to undo it, specific to Uber and Lyft. I didn't see any of the other aspects being included in the signature campaign that's going on.
I thought they're out. Uber and Lyft have now decided, they're just re-maneuvered some, aren't they kind of out of the whole deal now?
I think they have attempted to get, change things to try to get around it. And there are ongoing lawsuits about it, but it sounds like perhaps discussing with some more depth at the finance administration.
Yeah. And just a quick follow-up, Alex, if you're okay with it. At the VIP 10 on Saturday, if Jim Wood is there, we can talk to him. He's our assembly member there.
Mike will be at the parade, I'm sure, so you can always grab, try and grab in.
Yeah, okay. All right, so that's going to be on the calendar for the 27th, the Police Finance Subcommittee, right? Okay. Next, subcommittee reports, Finance Administration and Police.
Oh, we meet on the 27th at 4:00 p.m.
Planning, Community.
Mayor, if I can, just real quick, on the 27th, we are coordinating a presentation by bond counsel from Jones Hall.
Okay.
About formation of assessment districts. Staff will work diligently to, obviously, whatever materials were provided from the bond counsel, to put that in the packet and share that with the rest of the council.
Okay. So are you saying that it's going to be a full agenda?
I anticipate it to be a full agenda.
Okay. Well, if we put this AB 5 somewhere on there, future items or something, so that we have a placeholder for it. Planning, Community, and Sustainability, that is myself and Councilmember Brigham.
Yep.
And I think you're the chair on that.
Next meeting is February the 18th, 4 o'clock.
Public Works?
March 24th.
City and Fire District?
The next meeting will be on June 8th, 2020, at 5:30.
Okay. Joint City and School District?
It's me again. We have a tentative special meeting on February the 24th. Now, I must remind the room that typically Marta Cruz is the chair of this particular meeting. However, we have an item on the agenda in which she has to recuse herself, so I will get it.
Okay, well, I think Councilmember Bagby and myself, I talked about that, and I think we both volunteered to assist you on that one particular item.
I won't be here.
I have no opposition to one and/or both, whatever you guys see fit.
Well, I think just one, but...
I think we were going to flip for it.
Yeah. Marty, you won't be at the meeting at all?
I won't be at the meeting at all.
Okay, yeah. It's too important a topic to tell one council member, so...
Yes.
Even though staff will be there.
And it's at, I'm sorry, it's at 5:00 p.m.?
That's correct.
You know what? It's on you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Because I booked something in the meantime, since we were talking about it. I apologize.
That's okay. I wanted to do it anyhow, so that's good.
Special meeting is for?
Oh, yes. It was the result of, unfortunately, an item in which you had to recuse yourself, the design of the skate park and Times Square properties. We agreed with Toddland and the school board's request to be a little bit more collaborative over the project moving forward, and this is our next attempt to make that happen.
Might I add, right now, that I no longer have a conflict.
Fantastic.
So I will be able to speak to anything over on that property.
Okay.
And I'm glad that Mayor Walter will be there, because you were the vice chair last year, so you do know what's been going on.
Good. And lastly, the Homeless Community Advisory Group, we met on the 11th, which was last evening, and...
Next meeting's planned March 10th.
March 10th, okay. And it's also going to be 5:00 o'clock, and the location, I think, will be the Fire District.
We still have to, we originally confirmed that date, but starting at 1:00, and I know sometimes on those Tuesdays, they have training at certain hours, but we'll confirm whether that location is available, and if not, seek an alternative location.
So we're going back to daytime, not evening?
Mayor was suggesting...
No, it's going to be 5:00.
Okay.
Yeah. I think what David was referring to, he confirmed the fire station at 1:00. He's not sure about 5:00.
Gotcha.
So the location will be determined. Council reports, verbal, anything?
Mayor, real quick here, last Wednesday, met with the supervisor, James Gore. We now have a standing monthly meeting Thursday. I had the pleasure of joining the mayor and city staff for an award that we received from the YMCA pertaining to our recreational activities with the pool. On Monday, I met with Ron Pavelka, read the Alexander Valley Resort, and last night, I attended the homeless advisory group. Thank you.
Well, mine...
Thank you. Go ahead, Marty.
Uh...
You got your written report.
Yeah, it's my written. I attended the Legislative Committee for Community Services at the League of Cities in Sacramento, Rona Park, with all of you at the State of the County presentation. Attended the crab feed with Councilmember Bagby at the Farm Bureau Crab Feed at Santa Rosa. I distributed books at Jefferson Elementary School with the Juani's Free Books Project, February 4th. Attended the Water Education for Elected Latino Leaders in Orange County, and particularly enjoyed the groundwater replenishment system, something that we will be talking about in the future. And I have arranged with the Citrus Fair to have the Spanish announcement during the parade. That's why I'm not going to be in a car. I'm going to be standing with my cane. And Irene is going to be assisting in making the Spanish announcements, as well as Ms. Galván from the community of Cloverdale, Maria. And attended the chapter meeting of Health Action yesterday, and also the Homeless Ad-Hoc Committee yesterday.
Well, if you're real nice to the parade folks, they might give you a chair rather than have you stand with your cane.
No, don't worry. I have my own chair.
Oh, okay. Legislative, oh, I'm sorry, council reports?
I should have admitted my writing.
No, I'm good.
Okay. Legislative reports?
No reports, Mayor.
Okay, city manager or city attorney reports?
Council. Mayor, Council, I'm just really pleased to present to the council the award that was received from the YMCA on Thursday last week. This is in recognition of the council's commitment to operate the summer pool program and Cloverdale Memorial Veterans Hall program. It's been in operation since 1991, so we're in a partnership of 29 years with the YMCA. Mayor Walter and Vice Mayor Turner were on hand to receive the award from the Y. It was a very nice ceremony, and recognized the city as a healthy, living champion for our partnership with the YMCA. So I just want to really acknowledge the City Council for their commitment to working with the Y for our swim program. I know it's taught many folks how to swim, and it's particularly been beneficial for swim lessons for our Latino community, and I know without a doubt, it's prevented drownings in our area. So it's an important program, and I know this council's committed to continuing that partnership. So with your support, we'll have this award hung at City Hall, and for the public to be able to see. I'm happy to pass it around if you want to take a look at it. That's it, Mayor, for my report.
Thank you, David. And there's also a silent partner there that we don't really mention enough, and that's the SINK Foundation. They make a contribution to our swim program every year in memory of the SINK's daughter. And Irene was also with us, so thank you for coming with us, Irene. I appreciate it.
She would like to say...
I doubt it.
Council direction for future agenda items?
Actually, I do have, Mayor, actually, it's a great idea. I recommend that for future agenda item, we look at intentional living in tiny house communities, and just make sure that there aren't any major obstacles, maybe examine them, multifamily and mobile home sites, you know, just make sure that we are on track with that trend. So I know that it's incredibly popular, and it's growing, and we need to make sure that there aren't any stumbling blocks for folks, people, folks coming in, wanting to create a community like that.
There are.
Yeah, they're here.
They're here.
They're already here.
But I mean, there are obstacles, yeah.
Okay.
I have one comment.
Yes.
Uh, on the, on the new pilot neighborhood improvement grant program...
Yes.
Uh, I would like for that to also read that hard copies can also be, uh, distributed at city hall.
Okay, um, we already approved that on the consent calendar.
Yeah.
And, um, so, so I'll work with staff, uh, to make sure that we ma, we make that modification if we can. If not, we'll bring it back.
Yeah, because I mentioned it yesterday, the health action, and I don't know...
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so Irene, do you have a note of that?
Yes, and we'll make sure it's on the website as well.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else? From the public? Okay, I want to thank staff for, for, for staying so late. Irene, I want to thank you for giving me the talking points for the mayors and council members tomorrow evening. Thank you, that was nice of you. And, uh, David and Kevin, thank you. Alex, it was good seeing you. And, uh, we'll go from there. Meeting adjourned.